Call meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Happy Cinco de Mayo. Roll call, please, Danielle.
President Rios.
President.
Vice President Mendoza.
President.
Board Clerk Yu.
You know what? I think she probably doesn't know the open number to call, I mean, to talk.
She didn't know how to unmute herself. She was on.
She's on, but she...
Board Member Apodaca.
Here.
Board Member La.
Here.
Board Member Nishi.
Here.
Board Member Se.
President.
Board Member Yu.
Let me text her. Let me call her. Let me text her.
Okay, well, we welcome public comments. Comments submitted will be presented during the public comment section, which is limited to one hour, and each speaker to one presentation of five minutes unless the board wishes to waive the time limit. Those who have a group concern are encouraged to select a spokesperson to address the board. Comments submitted regarding a specific agenda item will be presented following the staff comments and prior to the board's discussion in taking action. Pledge of Allegiance, uh, Board Member Apodaca, would you like to lead us in the pledge, please?
Yes, everybody locate a flag somewhere. Your right hand, your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all.
You may be seated.
That's a little rugged.
Thank you. Spotlight on teaching and learning, Dr. Su.
Thank you very much, everyone, um, for joining us tonight. Uh, tonight, we wanted to just spend some time giving the board a budget update that will be presented by Tuan Nguyen tonight. And, uh, the budget update includes information regarding the expenses during our COVID-19 crisis as well as upcoming twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one school year. And at this time, I would like to, um, have Tuan do a brief budget update tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Su. Good evening. Um, so I want to start by, um, giving you an update on the current year. The last time you got an update was at the beginning of March when we, um, presented to the board the, um, second interim report. That was, um, I believe, on March 5th or March 6th, and that, um, is before all this COVID-19 began. So, um, in the current year, look at, uh, the current situation that the school district is in in terms of revenues and expenditures. What are we expecting? So, the big ticket item is the LCFF funding, and that should, that remains unchanged. So, the allocation on that is based on your ADA and your, um, un-duplicated count of students. So, that hasn't changed, and we expect to receive full funding for that. So, at least we know that for the current year, the LCFF funding is safe. On top of that, there are two pots of money that came in, um, to help the district with COVID-19. One is from the state. It's under the SB 117 emergency funding, where the state allocate a hundred million dollars to school district to help with COVID-19. So, for A, B, C, we received three hundred and fifty thousand dollars under SB 117. Also, the, um, federal funding came in under the CARES Act. Uh, that was about a little bit more than two point six million dollars. So, collectively, we anticipate, anticipate to receive about three million dollars between the state emergency funding and the federal CARES funding. And this is for the current year, and this is expected to be one time. So, that is on the revenue side, right? So, so far, so good. We, we receive about three million dollars more in additional funding. Will there be additional round of same federal stimulus funding? Uh, there's a lot of talk in DC about that. Uh, I have heard number as much as five hundred billion dollars to help out with state and local governments. Uh, and it's still at the very early talking stage. So, we don't know if that will happen, and even if it will, we don't know how much we expect to receive. So, that is, um, to be, um, to be coming hopefully soon. But, uh, right now, we can count, uh, for the three millions that I mentioned earlier. So, on the, uh, on the other side, though, so that's where the good news ends, pretty much. We anticipate for the current year, there's some loss of funding, happened immediately. Uh, lottery revenues, we normally receive about four million a year for that. Um, we expect it to receive about half a million dollar less this year, about three point five, which is versus the four budgeted. Uh, as you can see, you know, when the state locked down on March, um, sixteen, when schools closure, and March nineteen, when the governor declared, um, a state that's safer at home, um, everything kind of come to a stop, including lottery sales. So, uh, there's a major, we expect about ten percent decline this year. Facility rentals, you know, we ran out of facilities and all that pretty much stopped after March sixteen also. So, we also expect to receive, um, about fifty thousand dollar less in revenues from that. So, so far, half a million impact on lottery revenue and facility rentals, about five hundred, fifty thousand dollars. Nutrition services program, SB 117 required that we pay off, we continue to pay every, all employees through the end of the school year. Um, you know, we still providing the meals, but it's substantially less than what we normally provide during the school year. Uh, usually, we provide about thirteen thousand meals per day. Uh, now it's down to about, on average, thirty-five hundred meals per day. So, there's the, there's that huge cost of revenues between the federal money and the parents from the sales of the food. So, the impact of that is about a net negative half a million dollars. We continue to pay our employees. We have some control in the food cost, which is about forty percent. Obviously, we don't need as much food. Uh, but even outside of that, um, we expect to, um, take a hit in that program, about half a million dollars. We have an EDP program, uh, which is the extended day program where we, um, it's a four fee program. This is the before and after school programs. And again, uh, after March thirteen, we have to refund, um, a lot of fees to parents, and they stopped paying where we, but we, the law requires to continue to, continue to pay our employees. So, another hit of about half a million dollars in that program. We also have a preschool program at Carver that's also four fee, and same situations. We're looking at about a fifty thousand dollars, um, budget hit on that program, too. So, collectively, all the items that I mentioned in term of loss of revenues is about one point six million dollars, uh, to the negative. So, there's additional costs with COVID-19 as we ramp up social, um, disandlearning rather. Uh, we have to purchase face masks for employees. So far, we purchased, we spent about a hundred thousand dollars between disposable and reusable face masks for all of our employees. This is for the two thousand employee that should we, if they come back in the fall, we should have sufficient face masks for them at this point. We are looking to purchase additional items such as a, um, face shield for certain group of employees, other PPE, such as, um, thermometer that we can scan if we need to, and other additional, um, things, things that we might need for COVID, you know, should we come back in the fall. We purchased about eleven hundred hotspots for students with a six months, uh, prepay, um, monthly fee on that so students can use, and that cost us about one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, this is eleven hundred hotspots for students that, that do not have internet connections. In addition, we hand out about fifty-eight hundred devices to students, and we expect to receive, you know, about ninety percent of them come back with a ten percent either damage or loss. Uh, that ten percent is about six hundred devices, uh, at three hundred dollars apiece. That is about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So, in total, roughly about another half a million dollars in additional cost between, uh, PPE, hotspots, and devices. So, that is the current year. Uh, to recap, three million dollars between the SB 117 and, uh, the CARES funding, about two million dollars in terms of lost revenues and additional costs, um, for the, for the operation that will get us through the end of the year. So, that is the current year, a snapshot picture at this point. Going into next year, next year is a little bit more tricky and a little bit more gloomy, if you will, uh, with the governor's budget proposal back in January, basically, uh, the county and the state tell us that it's no longer relevant, uh, you know, that was back in January before all this hit. So, uh, the COLA of two point three one percent that he proposed, or the additional funding for special ed programs, all that were no longer on the table. The next important day is May fourteen, when he released the May revise. Uh, that is when we have the update from, from the governor in terms of next year, um, what, what is, uh, the potential cuts, if you will, uh, for school districts. Even that is, is preliminary, and here's why. Usually, the May revise is dependent on the April fifteen tax collection. That's when they pretty much know, uh, you know, the revenues from, from tax, uh, from, from individuals and, and corporations. That they get pushed out to July fifteen, as you know, because the federal government extend that for three months. So, they don't really, really know the tax collection until July fifteen. So, the May revise and even the budget adoption from the state is pretty much going to be a rollover budget. The real budget will come in, in August, when they have, when they actually know, uh, after the July fifteenth tax collection, have a better idea of how much collect, tax was collected in the, in twenty nineteen, twenty and twenty twenty-one, then you will have a real budget, if you will, by August. So, the, the district will adopt our budget based on the May revisions, knowing that it is just a rollover budget, with the real budget will come in August. And then, after that, sometime in September, October, we will take it to the board, the, if, 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 if I want to say, the more, a more realistic picture of the budget for next year. So, for next year, at the June second meeting, you will have to, you know, all this in writing with a preliminary budget, uh, to the board, uh, for public hearing, for a budget hearing on the budget itself. And then, June sixteen is the final budget for the board to approve. Normally, this is when we also take the LCAP to the board for the, for the hearing and approval. But this year, the LCAP process has been pushed back until December. So, you will not be receiving an LCAP update or hearing, um, but only the budget. Now, at the June sixteen board meeting, because, um, because of the pushback of the LCAP, uh, we are required to re, report to the board something called a COVID-19 response report. That's when you get that at the second board meeting also, on how the district is responding, uh, to COVID-19 with, uh, so, disandlearning and all, and all the issue related to that. So, be a two-page report to the board, uh, with regard to COVID-19. So, uh, June second, again, preliminary budget hearing, and June sixteen, final budget adoption for the district for next year. However, knowing that it could be just a rollover budget, um, with the real numbers will come in in August. So, we are looking at the best case scenario for next year would be the same funding as the current year with no cuts. So, that is the best case scenario. The worst case scenario I have seen from sickmat is that up to ten percent cuts and deferral. So, that would likely about a twenty million dollars hit to A, B, C. Now, again, that's the worst case scenario. We, we, we not anticipating that. That's also unlikely. Uh, so, but that number has been floating out there. So, even if we come in with the best case scenario, which is no funding cuts, right? We got the same funding for the current year. We still have additional costs that we are facing. To remind the board, it's the increase in pension costs, increase in healthcare costs, increase in seven columns, uh, costs. We also have declining enrollment, um, costs. And it's next year, uh, because of the agreement that the board approved back in, uh, September, uh, there'll be additional compensation costs. It was like a two-year deal, if you will, of about one percent for next year. So, we're looking at about a five million dollars, um, in the red for next year. That is the best case scenario. Now, if additional federal fundings, uh, come in and to support the school district, that would be a different story. But right now, we are, um, not counting on that just yet. Come the fall, should school open, there's a lot of additional costs that we don't know. There's a lot of questions and with very little answers at this point. Uh, there's a lot of talk about, do we need to provide the sneeze guard or the plexiglass for employees? Um, you know, if they work for office employees. Additional custodial staff, if we need to do deep cleaning and disinfecting every classroom every night should students come back. And, um, possible additional instructional staff to provide additional support to students. So, we are looking at a budget scenario where there could potentially cuts and potentially a lot of additional expenditures that we facing. Uh, we went through the great recessions back in two thousand and eight together with our union groups. Um, everyone's going through this again. We anticipate that we will go, do, to do this together, partner with our, uh, union groups. So, uh, we will not overreact, to remind the board. We will act measurably and accordingly when we have the facts. And right now, um, it's really pending on that August revision budget is when we really know the real number for next year. So, uh, that is the end of my budget update, Dr. Su.
Thank you very much, Tuan. Are there any just quick questions?
Hello?
Yes, I have some questions.
Okay, please state your name.
My name is Su. Question?
Okay, go ahead.
Bernie.
Sorry, Board Clerk Su Yu.
Okay, hi, I'm back. I was unmuted. Um, so, Tuan, you know, with a pandemic, it's a concern that, thank God, that, uh, the budget that, uh, you know, we already had it for this year, but for the coming year, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, uh, how are we doing, how are we with a cut?
So, uh, right now...
Say, we have the maximum cut, ten percent, yeah.
Yeah, but right now, there's no cuts yet, right, for next year. The May revise from the governor on May fourteen is, is the first, um, basically, uh, the first glance at what, what is his thinking in term of next year. So, we will, uh, so at the next board meeting on June second, you will know, uh, with, with the May revise on what the potential cuts will look like. But the real budget will come in August, though. Like I said, with the August revisions, when we actually have, the state has a, a better number, right? Because tax collection get pushed out until July fifteen, uh, for the state, right? Um, so, they, they, they should know, um, some at May fourteen. Um, and a lot of people are still filing the tax by April fifteen. But a lot of them choose, won't, won't pay until July fifteen when they really have to. So, they don't really know.
Right, right, right.
And then, so the real number is, uh, in August, when we have an August revisions. Uh, for the first time, there was, there's never been such thing as an August revision, ever.
Right, right.
So, uh, we are in uncharted territory, um, you know, water. So, that, that's all we wa, we have to wait until May fourteen and, and, and August, um, revision. But like I shared with, um, earlier, the best case scenario would be no cuts, right?
Yes, yes.
With the same funding. And even with that, we still have a lot of expenditures. And if we have any additional cuts on top of that, we have to deal with that. So, we have a reserve, so I don't want to alarm anyone at this point.
Okay, that's good, yeah.
Come August, come August, when we have a real, uh, a more solid number, a better number, then, um, like we did bef, before, we will present to the board with a different plan, A, B, and C, uh, to choose from should we need to make any budget adjustments.
Mm, thank you, Tuan. This must be very difficult, most difficult for you as you work with the numbers. But, yeah, I mean, the whole nation is going through this, and I was just concerned about the, the cut. Are we ready to handle this? And I'm sure you have a plan, but just wanted us to, you know, start thinking about that, too, and how we can, uh, do the best with what we have, should we have some cuts, yeah. Thank you, Tuan.
Okay, it was suggested that I go down the list of board members to see if they have any comments. That way, it'll be clearer. So, I will start with Vice President Mendoza.
No comments, no questions. Thank you, Madam President.
Board Member La.
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a question. Tuan, uh, you have mentioned that we have declining enrollment. How is this going to affect us in terms of who is going to school right now in the virtual learning thing? Are we losing people because they're not doing it, or we don't know?
So, yeah, that is another question. Just right now, uh, as we close, um, report our ADA for the current year, we know that we down about a hundred, one hundred and seventy students. So, we know that going to next year, you lose that funding already. Now, with next year enrollment, that's very tricky. You know, school choice is right now is, is, is on, and, and we, we, we still enrolling every student that, that come through our door virtually, if you will, online. So, we don't know the impact yet really, um, mainer, and Dr. Miss La, until, um, until August, if, if, uh, if we open school then, or when we open school. But right now, for the current year, the ADA is, we down about one hundred and seventy students, and the state will use that to provide funding for next year. So, for next year, at least, we, we know the ADA. Uh, now, if next year we're going to down more, then it's going to impact the following year. So, it's always one year in the rear for us. So, next year enrollment, if you ask me right now, how much are we going to be down? I really don't have an answer, because this thing is, it could impact, you know, a lot of, a lot of things, and we don't know.
Um, do we get the same ADA in dealing with virtual learning kid?
Yes, that, for the current year, ADA has been set, funding has been set. The state has not reduced, um, the per ADA funding, whether it's disandlearning or, or face-to-face. So, ADA for the current year has been determined. It was at the beginning of the year through the end of February. So, they stopped counting ADA after February, for, from a funding perspective.
So, it doesn't matter if they're not, I mean, it matters, but in terms of ADA.
Right, from a funding perspective, it doesn't matter. From a, from an academic perspective, that's a different question.
Yeah, you see a lot of stuff being written about how many, uh, students are just, uh, basically not participating. I don't, not necessarily in our district, but all over.
Yeah, so there will be a, a, a presentation on the grading policy, and I, I'm sure Dr. Mayfield will address some of that, so...
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Board Member Apodaca.
None at this time, Madam President.
Board Member Nishi.
Yes, first, I'd like to thank Dr. Su for providing the one thousand one hundred hotspots. I was at an earlier thing this, today, and they're looking at us as the gold standard of what, what to do in a COVID, uh, nightmare that we're experiencing now. So, that, that was kind of a, a nice thing to hear. Um, so that was the comment. The two questions is related to, I guess we have a three million dollar loss this fiscal year, and at the best case scenario, five million dollar loss, uh, for the following fiscal year. And so, the three million, is that coming out of our reserves?
Um, Mr. Nishi, no, no, the three million is additional funding. So, we actually net out one million dollars in the plus this year. So, we get, uh, between SB 117 funding and the CARES funding, three million dollars. The loss of revenues, all the items that I mentioned, and the additional costs, net out about two million dollars. So, this year, we actually, um...
Plus it.
Ahead, a little bit would be, would between the SB 117 funding and the CARES funding. Now, we will use that, obviously, to offset the five million dollars next year. Now, the five million dollars is just as up right now, right? As up on May fifth, and this is based on what we have, based on the additional costs, based on the compensations, that, uh, costs that we, um, have agreed to. Uh, so, um, that's where we are, and based on the declining enrollment. Should the state make any more adjustments, uh, that would change. Should the federal government could come in with additional support, that also could change that. But this year, we save.
Okay, so five million is kind of the best case scenario for the following years. This year, we're doing well, um, somewhat. And then, the following years, theoretically, we're going to have at a minimum five billion unless, uh, federal government jumps in with monies or, or whatever other places could happen. Um, but that's almost the best case scenario, because that's a rollover from the previous time. Have you thought of potentially projecting out, not necessarily the rosy scenario, but the middle, not the worst scenario either, because that wouldn't be appropriate to budget on, but something in between the two? Because if we're budgeting out in July, say, or June, and we're going to be starting to spend the money in, well, we're going to spend the money right away, but, um...
I'm sorry, I got disconnected, Mr. Nishi. Can you repeat the question? I, I, I lost the line, um, a little bit there.
Well, the issue is, can we not go by the best case scenario of five million? And not the worst case scenario of, well, I don't even, twenty million? But budget based upon somewhere in the middle, or closer to maybe the good side. But that way, the impact when the reality hits in August and September won't be so bad in terms of our planning for the schools and students.
So, so we can...
That would be something that I think would be more prudent, right?
Right, right.
Because the five million is only based upon just no COLAs just rolling over, and, and that does not seem too realistic.
Okay, so let me ans, try to answer the question. It is an estimation at this point. We really don't know until August. What, anything between the best case scenario and the worst case scenario would be arbitrary and guessing, right? So, any number that you pick, uh, you will be guessing. And what got us through the great recessions, uh, with the different groups without having to laying off any employee was that, um, we, we will react measurably and accordingly when we have the facts, and we will work with our union groups to do that. Uh, we have already put in place, um, you know, it's not a, a spending freeze, but a lot of measure to minimize expenditures to the extent that we can. There'll be potentially some savings, electricity, right? We don't have, uh, school, so that, um, that, there should be some of that. And other items, as we close the books and as we prepare the budget for you, um, on June second, you would have a better picture. Um, we, we don't have a hiring freeze yet, because I don't want to say that. But, you know, we kind of stopped the hiring process, but if we open back again, I'm sure we will, we will go through that and only hire those with, you know, to take care of health and safety and, and our teaching staff. So, so those are the things that we will, um, look at. And, and the reality is, that's what the reserve are for. And I, that's why, you know, uh, the recommendation from school services is always, you should have a seventeen percent reserve. That get you through two months, right? Uh, we have ten, like I shared with the board. They'll get us through at least one year, uh, if not more. We will have time to react, and we will have time to take, um, any measure adjustments if we need to after August, when we have the, a real picture. Because hopefully, by then, we should have additional information from the federal government, too, about another round of stimulus for state and lo, local government. That's three months from now, and, uh, and really, any adjustment to the budget, um, I'm not ready to prepare, or Dr. Su, to, uh, to present to the board any budget adjustments, at least at the earliest until the after August revisions. Uh, right now, we save for the current year. We, we, we will approach going into next year, um, frugally, like we always have. We, and we only spend what we have to spend. Uh, so, that's, that's the position that we in, and we only going to hire, um, the position that we have to at this point.
I, I understand. I, I, I trust that everybody's going to be fiscally very conservative, and that's, that's a great thing. I'm just concerned that sometimes, so for example, with the virus, a lot of people underestimated that, and it became not just a little bit worse, but maybe exponentially worse. And sometimes, if we face that demon a little bit sooner rather than later, even if it is a projection, it's kind of more of a reasonable projection than things are going to stay the same. And so, that's, that's the only suggestion I have, that, you know, I understand that, um, you know, we have all these, these protections in place, and that money may come in, and there's a lot of things that... and there's a lot of things that are gonna come in later. But we, we sort of know that, well, I mean, I just think that, um, sometimes pulling off a little bit of the Band-Aid now is better than waiting when... Because our reserve is about twenty-eight million, and this is about five million under the best scenario. Um, and so that's a big chunk of whatever little reserve we have. That's, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, um, our reserve is about ten percent, which is about just twenty million dollars. How, um, we, you know what, when we put the budget together for next year, um, Mr. Nishi, we will use the guideline based on the governor's may revise and the county, right? And even with that, I can provide the board with, um, another case. If, if we were to get more budget cut in August, this is what it's gonna look like. So, um, so we, 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 we can have the different scenario, but right now, we always operate, and this, it has worked for us and with our union group, is that we don't underreact, like the case you mentioned with COVID nineteen, for, for some, for, for some, um, officials. We react measurably and appropriately when we need to, uh, and we don't overreact. So that's, that's helped with, with the employees, and that's helped with, uh, morale, and, and that's...
I would never seek for, yeah, I would never ask for us to overreact. I'm just saying, maybe we have three different, well, you gave us, uh, two. One, one is the, the best case scenario, five million. One was the worst case scenario, twenty million, which would wipe us out, and that leave us nothing for next year. Um, maybe something in the middle would be a, a, an option for us to, to be able to see, and see what that actually looks like. So that way, when it comes time to budget, we can consider some of that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Board Member Say?
Yes, thank you. Um, so, uh, when you mentioned about two oh nine, I remember that very well. Me and Maynard, uh, we went through those freezing and reading layout three once. We did a good job, and I believe you, you will handle very well for this crisis again. Couple of questions I need to ask you about it. Uh, the school of choice, we're ending the end of the May, we're already closed already.
I believe we have extended to the end of May.
The end of the May?
Right, I can confirm with Melinda.
Sorry, um, Tuan, can I interrupt?
Yes, ma'am.
Sophia, the schools of choice, uh, ends actually this Friday.
That's what I thought, uh-huh, okay.
Lottery, the lottery will be posted on Sunday.
So this Friday is last day?
Students and families will be informed on Monday.
So you probably can give us more better figure, because we do think about, you know, we can see the, um, this train of the total student number each year is dropping it. So I expecting the staff was looking into what we're gonna do with this, keep dropping the student numbers. We need to think about it, because meanwhile, we talked about tonight, the, uh, the classified personal thing. Because I looked at a lot of retirement there. All of the twenty retirement teachers, about seventeen elementary school teachers retired. I think you probably realize that.
Yes.
For the June eleven, or between June eleven to June thirty. So we're losing a lot of staff around that time too, uh, beginning, at the end of this, uh, this, uh, June. Twenty people retired, seventeen elementary school retired. So we do need to think about a really good plan for the future, what we want to do. We're dropping, I mean, losing the student number, we're also losing the teacher there too. And second part, we're talking about hotspot. Um, how many students you say we give it to a ten fifty, or, uh? Tuan, how many students we give it to the hotspot?
Um, we hand out eleven hundred hotspots.
Eleven hundred, okay. I do know some teacher also concerned about their privacy. They, they, and they don't wanna use their own Wi-Fi for their own safety issue. Then you know, you might need to come up with some budget for that, for even the teacher hotspot. For safety, so that way they can really actually, uh, uh, contact with the student. Um, the second part is, that's gonna be another loss, because I know so far we are half million, right? We're losing half million, am I right?
It's just expenditures that we need to spend, right?
Okay.
It's not losing, it's just additional expenditures.
Oh, so when you mentioned about the, uh, the fifty-eight device we're giving away? And so those devices, I know some are already, some kids already break the ready there. How do we help those students? I mean, do we have contract with them? I know probably eventually when we, the end of the COVID nineteen, when the student come back, we've been lose a lot of the, uh, device that we give it to them. So how, how about those students have break the, um, the iPad already, I mean, not iPods. We, we give it to Chrome, right?
Right, so the devices that we hand out, which is fifty-eight hundred, we expect a, a ten percent loss on that, whether it's damage or, or not return. And that's what built into my, um, budget, a number. If, if, a ten percent loss is about six hundred devices, and that's about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Eighty thousand dollars.
Now, with currently, if the students, um, damaged the device, they can get a replacement. So if they bringing it in, we give them a new one.
Okay.
But we full, it's just like textbooks, we fully expect the students and the families to return the devices. However, we also need to be realistic about that, and that's why we built in a ten percent, um, potential loss of the device.
That's why I'm looking this loss here, the students need to get what they're supposed to do, supposed to have. And the hotspot, I'm also worried about the teachers. Some people, like I mentioned to you, we might wanna spend some money there, on there too, for the teacher, the hotspot. And then consider about the, uh, retirement, twenty, the employee gonna retire on June twenty twenty. What are we gonna do in dropping the students? I do think we need to come up with a really good plan. And I know on twenty, two oh eight, we have A, B, C plan, then the board have the choose. Uh, so I, I'm asking you, please, uh, make some nice plan for this, all the issues that I just asked, to consider it, okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I don't really have a comment, I just wanna make, uh, I mean, I don't have a question. I wanna, uh, make a comment about, you know, very relieved to hear that we did get some money. You know, that money that came from SB one seventeen and, um, other. I'm sure it was a big relief to everyone in the district. And I think when it comes to being fiscally prudent, we're in good hands, Tuan, so good job. Thank you. At this time, we'll go ahead and move on. May I have a motion to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of May fifth, twenty twenty?
Yes, Sophia, so move.
Mendoza, second. Okay, roll call, please, Tanya?
Mr. Apodaca?
Yes?
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes?
Doctor Rios?
Yes.
I'm, I'm very, um, first.
Mrs. Say?
I can ask more than you have done presentation, okay?
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Uh, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April seventh, twenty twenty?
So move.
Second, Sophia.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Apodaca?
Hi.
Mr. Lo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Doctor Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Superintendent's report, Dr. Su?
Thank you very much, President Rios. First of all, happy Cinco de Mayo, everyone.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
I hope that, uh, everyone was still able to celebrate in their homes the anniversary of the Battle of Puebla, a military victory in eighteen sixty-two over the French forces. This is also the National Teachers Appreciation Week. I wanna thank all the great teachers in ABC Unified School District and throughout our country. Teachers always rise to the occasion, especially during this pandemic. Thank you for all that you do every day to support our students and their families. Since we've been closed on March sixteenth, I've also participated in numerous video conferences and webinars every week. This includes the Los Angeles County Office of Education Superintendent's meetings, Atkinson, Anderson, Loyola, Romo, and RUDS webinars, the AXA Superintendent's WebX meetings, the Cerritos College Zoom meetings, like the one held today, and our legislators sessions, including Assemblymember Christina Garcia and State Senator Bob Archileta. In addition, I host a daily emergency operations center, a Google Meet video conference for up to two hours. All of these virtual meetings are essential for me now in the remaining weeks of our school, as well as thinking about reopening our schools for the new school year. Last week, many of you may have heard that Governor Newsom was considering opening schools in July or early August. Please note that this is not a mandate. The Los Angeles County Office of Education is not recommending that we reopen in July. This is clearly still a local decision. However, the reopening of our schools will be very different from what we have done in the past. The LA County Office of Education is working closely with the LA County Department of Public Health on a guidance and a menu of options for school districts. There will be certain conditions that all schools will be required to maintain when schools reopen. They include the following. We need to plan for physical distancing of our students and staff at a minimum of six feet apart the entire school day. Schools will not be able to hold assemblies, sporting events with spectators, dances, and other social events. Face coverings will be required for all students and staff. We will need to plan on virus testing if there are any outbreaks in any school site with the support of the Department of Public Health. People over the age of sixty-five and those with pre-existing conditions will likely continue to stay at home and work remotely. In addition, school districts will need to begin purchasing personal protective equipment, or the PPE, to ensure that staff and students have access to the necessary tools to maintain health and safety. We recognize that this creates many challenges for us as we consider reopening schools. We will continue to work with all of our labor leaders as we move forward with these new requirements. During our EOC meetings, we are currently working on plans for summer school. School at both the elementary and the secondary levels will be in place. We will still offer credit recovery programs through Edmentum, extended school year for students with disabilities, the migrant education classes, an ELD program for English learners, as well as childcare for students. We are exploring different options for capturing students with learning loss during this last semester. With the exception of childcare, this will all be done through distance learning. These details will be finalized soon, and we will inform the board, as well as all of our school communities. We have a resolution tonight regarding our grading practices during this last semester. And Dr. Valencia Mayfield will be doing a presentation tonight regarding the grading, as well as the resolution. At the last board meeting in April, we heard many high school students speak about their need for an in-person graduation. We definitely heard you and appreciate this important milestone in your life. As a result, we will hold two very special events for the class of twenty twenty. We will hold a virtual graduation on June tenth, twenty twenty, for all of our high schools. Yesterday, I was involved at Cereals High School, where I did my speech for all the high schools. President Dr. Olga Rios was at Artesia High School today, accepting the class of twenty twenty for all of our high schools. We will also hold an in-person graduation as soon as, as it is safe to do so. We're all aiming to have it before the beginning of the new school year. We look forward to seeing all of our students in the class of twenty twenty soon. And that completes my report, Dr. Rios.
Thank you. At this time, we have employee representative reports. Um, Mr. Ray Gare?
Uh, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, uh, good evening, uh, I'm Ray Gare, President of ABC Federation Teachers. And Tanya Golden, who's the coordinator for ABCFT, will also be giving the report. Uh, good evening, President, uh, Dr. Rios, Board Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Su, Administrative Cabinet, teachers, nurses, and the ABC community. Um, well, a lot has happened over the last seven, seven weeks. And, uh, we didn't do a report last time, because we were still in the midst of a lot of changes. But just to let you know, uh, ABC and, ABC USD and ABCFT have been working hand in hand over the last seven weeks to make these changes needed, to make sure that we are the gold standard, and that we're doing, uh, an excellent job here, uh, for our students. Um, at the national level, the American Federation Teachers released a plan last week, and we delivered that to the superintendent and some of the administrative cabinet, which is called a Plan to Safely Open American Schools and Communities. And so it really just outlines in about nine pages that we are all about the health of the kids and employees first. And, uh, your labor unions want to open the schools just as badly, but then we also see that there's a need for safety and protection. And so, uh, we're gonna make sure that all of you get to see that report. It just was released just recently, but we'll get it to you very shortly. Uh, and we've been working very closely with the district in our usual partnership way. Um, and that means that administrative cabinet and, um, members of the union are continuing to work on academic services, um, related, uh, situations, uh, financial situations, uh, human resources situation. So we've made, uh, it, it was definitely a, a crisis for the first week, but we have re-implemented our partnerships. And this is probably unique to, uh, most places in the United States. I'd, I'd say that we're, we're very unique. Uh, we were able to have a MOU together in that first week that was really, um, guiding, and it's allowed us the flexibility to make changes along the way. And you'll see that in a lot of districts, there are MOUs on very separate issues, such as grading and video, and how much time, and all that. And we've been able to do those informally here, and that has given us great flexibility and probably, uh, increase, uh, the effectiveness of our teachers with the students. And so we, we applaud the, the fact that we've been able to work with the cabinet members, with academic services, to make adjustments as needed, to ensure that this is a win-win for both partner, all situations. So for students, for teachers, for the administrative cabinet, academic services, it's been a win. Uh, just a couple of examples, we worked on a grading policy together. It took about two weeks. Um, it was really crucial, because, um, that was being done in lots of other districts, but every district is unique. And so for us to create our own, uh, unique system here, took a lot of, a lot of voices in the room. But it was, uh, I, I think in the end, there was no pushback from, uh, from most of the teachers and from most of the administrators, and everybody got to say, and it's gonna be for the benefit of our students. We also worked on a live video policy that's been very effective. Uh, was released a couple of weeks ago, and, uh, teachers across the district are either engaging regularly or are experimenting with it, because they know that this is another way that we can reach our kids, not only academically, but for mental health services. Um, we've also worked, uh, with the administrative cabinet to, to make sure that the issue of mental health services is something that's on the forefront for our students. Um, we've, ABCFT's been having virtual site meetings with staffs, and it's been nice to get those attending, we attend those meetings, the staff shows up, we give them the latest issues, we get feedback. Um, it's a way to, to continue to build the, uh, community that we have. We also have a, a two-hour virtual chat with our members every Thursday. We're a hundred to a hundred and fifty teachers. We'll get on for a couple of hours, ask questions, uh, ask for clarity. We write down what their, their, um, what their concerns are, or, or really, sometimes it's just sharing, uh, funny things, things that they're thinking about, uh, stories from their students. Uh, we're continuing to do our, our Friday Union News, which we've been doing for the last three years. And, uh, and we also have included now what we call a Tuesday Talk, where we take all the questions that we get from the whole week, and we put those into a question and answer document every Tuesday. And so these are all really important pieces to make sure that everybody feels like there's a sense of community, that the ABC education community... a sense of community, that the ABC education community is intact. And this is absolutely crucial. I was here during the recession. I was part of the negotiating team, and I heard Juan say that we had a measured response, and I want to also emphasize that, is that ABC was unique to the districts around it who were giving pink slips because we did not jump to conclusions, we did not go worst-case scenario, or even middle-case scenario. We waited for the facts to come out. Going into that recession, we had an 8% reserve, and that was a long-term recession. Going to this, we had a 10% reserve, and this is not considered to be a long downturn. So, we will work together to make budget adjustments as they come, and we will stay on the same page and use our communication tools of working virtually together, communicating weekly with our members, with the staff, with administrative cabinet, with principals, so that everybody understands not only the financial situation, the academic situation, and the mental health situation of our students. So, I'm going to go ahead and pass the baton over to Tanya. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. This is Tanya Golden, membership coordinator for ABC Federation Teachers, and I'm just going to do a real check, quick check that you can hear me, yes?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So, I just wanted to give you some updates of what's happening at the state level as well as what we're doing here locally. CFT is working on reconnecting... or recommending, excuse me, participants for three new COVID-19-related task force at the state level. One of them is closing the digital divide. The second one is promoting quality standards in distant learning. And the third is learning loss as a result of distant learning environment. So, that is something that the state has put together, and we're working on getting members at that task force so that teachers can have a voice at these important task force. Another thing that CFT is doing with CFT committees and division councils, they met this last weekend, and ABCFT members do represent on these committees, and one of their tasks were to identify the needs and recommendations that would guide CFT advocacy efforts at the state and national level. You know, it's really reassuring that teachers who are being impacted during this crisis are given the opportunity to use their collective voices. And I'm really proud of our members that are stepping up, and even though, gosh, been working many, many hours, you know, they gave up their Saturday to do this work, and it's not just that they go to the meeting, but then they do the work of the committee as well. So, I'm really proud of our members that have done that. Also, the work of the union continues with our ABC Federation Teachers Teacher Leader Group. They started eight months ago, working hard on their action research. Even though we had a blip, we have not stopped. And basically, what they've done this whole time is working on identifying educational policy issues. And we are going to be celebrating the end of our teacher leader program with our third annual showcase on May 26th. So, please pencil in your calendar, May 26th, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. It will be held virtually, and invitations will be sent later this week. Some of the topics of the research, action research, will include social, emotional growth, safe learning environment, mindfulness, kinder readiness assessments, restorative practices, teacher supports, just to name a few. And you can see even on these topics, that these are the topics teachers self-select, and there was really a need for social, emotional, mental health needs for our students. And this was before our crisis that we're in. So, I'm looking forward to hear the results. The teacher leaders will be sharing the results of their action research as well as the recommendations, and I hope that our board members and our cabinet members and also our ABC community will be able to join us on this virtual showcase and enjoy the results of what they have to share. So, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you both, Ray and Tanya, for your hard work. At this point, we'll move on to public...
Thank you for the opportunity.
Excuse me?
I just said, "Thank you for the opportunity."
Oh, sorry. That was right. Okay, thought I was a board member. Public comments for Clerk Yu?
Yes. Persons wishing to address the board on a specific agenda item at the time the item is under discussion are limited to five minutes each. Comments will be read prior to the board's discussion and taking action. Adverse remarks about a person's race, ancestry, ethnic group identification, religion, color, national origin, sex, sexual orientation, gender, mental, or physical handicap, or age may not be made. Concerns presented to the board will be followed up and addressed by the appropriate staff. Communications Officer Cusman.
Thank you, Clerk Yu. I appreciate that. Good evening, President Dr. Rios and board members. I will be reading the six public comments that we have received, and they were all sent in electronically, so we have no recorded messages this evening. So, I'll go ahead and start right now. The first one is from Dr. Beth Bray. Good evening. I am Dr. Beth Bray, President of the ABC Management Association. I want to thank President Dr. Rios, Vice President Mendoza, Clerk Yu, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Sue for the opportunity to speak with you. I would also like to thank the ABC board for its leadership and support during these challenging times. Tonight, I am speaking on behalf of the Management and Confidential Employee Group. Collectively, we work in all departments and schools across the district to support our students. I would like to thank these dedicated people for their extraordinary efforts to keep students safe and learning, and to keep the district running smoothly during this time of school dismissal. On behalf of the Management and Confidential Employees, the Administrative Assistants, Coordinators, Managers, Supervisors, and Directors of Accounting, Child Development, Child Welfare and Attendance, Curriculum, Graphics, Human Resources, Information and Technology, Maintenance and Operations, Nutrition Services, Payroll, Purchasing, Special Education, Special Programs, Transportation, and our Principals, Assistant Principals, Deans, Counselors, Social Workers, and Psychologists, I request your support of our compensation package, which is on the agenda tonight. Thank you. The second message is from Wasana Marasigan. Our healthcare authorities say that the effects of COVID-19 might worsen due to the coming flu season. Does the school have any measures in place if there is a secondary surge? In terms of how to conduct the class, likewise, on how to help students who have core morbidities, comorbidities like diabetes, respiratory and immune system issues, will they be allowed to do online classes? The next comment is from Tony Beardo. Hello, this is Tony Beardo, the APSME president. During this time, it's important we all try to be kind and respectful of one another. Also, it's even more important to be thankful to one another, for these are trying times. I don't think any of us thought we would be facing something like COVID-19 in our lifetime. In closing, I wanted to take a moment and thank the board for their work and understanding in these trying times. Together, we can move mountains; yet divided, we only stand still. May you all stay well and be blessed. Thank you for your time. The next public comment is from Suresh Insur. Hello, I am a concerned parent about what ABC USD might decide for the upcoming school year. During the current school year, ABC USD was late to implement the online school program. However, for the upcoming school year, I would like to see that ABC USD take prudent decision and continue with the online program. Especially Dr. Fauci and all infectious disease experts are expecting a second wave come November. In fact, I see that my son is spending more time working on schoolwork more than he does at the school, being physically present. So, being online will help the whole community and keep the community safe from COVID. This is once-in-a-century, or hitherto not heard-of situation where nobody has a solution except being safe at home. So, please, let the school year be online, and maybe once a vaccine is available, you could get the students back to school. As you are aware, LAUSD has already taken the prudent decision to keep the next school year online. Regards, Suresh Insur. The next public comment is from Timothy Pong. Dear members of the Board of Education, first, I would like to thank the board, the school district, and the schools for the great effort in keeping our children safe and healthy while working on providing them with continuous learning and support during this unprecedented time. I really appreciate that. After having the children stay home for over a month now, I would like to share with you some observations and struggles that I have had and at least a few other families have. I would also like to suggest a few ideas that the school can help implement to make the online learning-at-home, OLA, experience more effective and less stressful. Currently, the OLA does not have a fixed 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. school schedule, which makes it hard for students to stay focused and establish a routine. One, as there is no regular starting time and teachers can assign classwork or homework anytime during the day, students end up waking up late in the morning and sometimes not starting schoolwork until the afternoon. When the schedule is pushed later into the day, students couldn't finish the homework until late evening, resulting in waking up late the next day. Two, online school hours can easily stretch over 12 to 16 hours. Without a rigid class hour or fixed schedule, as well as supervision by the subject teacher, students can become very distracted and can be snacking, chatting online, listening to music, playing online games, or watching a YouTube video while working on classwork, homework, or taking a lesson. Three, without having a regular school schedule and keeping students actively engaged, parents working from home have to continuously monitor the students to see what they are working on and making sure that they stay focused in the schoolwork and learning. In order to achieve the same focus and discipline for OLA as it is at school, here are some suggestions. One, the day should be structured similar to the current school schedule. Two, subject teacher should ideally take attendance, provide live teaching, have students work on classwork, and assign homework during the designated time period. Again, having students and teachers follow a regular schedule, just like a normal school schedule, will reduce stress, help establish routine and discipline, will also allow parents to know what students should be working on throughout the day, and to help support the students on their end. Three, we are very excited to hear that the school district is launching video conferencing and are looking forward to live face-to-face teaching during their class time. Live instruction are particularly important for subjects such as maths, science, and foreign language. If teachers are not available to provide face-to-face instruction class on a daily basis because of other family responsibilities, a prerecorded lesson could be provided during the same scheduled class time to follow the daily learning routine. Again, I really appreciate all the time and the effort of the Board of Education, the schools, as well as the school district, has put forth to help families and students navigate this unprecedented situation. I hope that the above suggestions will prove beneficial for everyone. Regards, Dem. And the last public comment this evening is from Lin Chang. Hello, my name is Lin Chang, and I'm the parent of a graduating Sarrios High School senior. Are there plans for the ABC district to surprise our seniors with yard signs like so many of the neighboring school districts? I think this would be a nice gesture and will not replace the June physical graduation, but at least would let the students know that the district and school administrators are thinking of them. Thank you. That is all the public comments for tonight, Clerk Yu.
Thank you. At this moment, we'll move on to consent calendar. May I have the motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move.
I'd like to move an item.
Was there a second?
Second.
Okay, who was that?
Sue.
This is me. I'd like to pull item 1.1C.
Yeah, is there anyone who wishes to remove an item to be considered separately?
I'd like to move 1.1C and... One second, 1.1C and 2.1C dash C. I just had a question, clarification. Sorry about that.
Help me out here. Does that mean we discuss them now?
It's clarification.
Okay, so, is that for item 1.1C?
Yeah, I think this will be... I think Mary, you mentioned about... Can you just kind of make that clear on this number 1.1C? Because I know you mentioned about doing your president, Superintendent report. You're talking about video graduation, right?
The virtual graduation?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
And then you say possible postponement with that. Is that right?
Well, we have a delayed in-person graduation also.
In-person?
Yes. We're doing two things.
We'll do two things for this high school grad?
Yes, the class of 2020.
Only for high school?
Yes.
And that costs about $15,000?
For all the five high schools.
You know, I do hear the parents concerned, they mentioned about the yard sign thing. I do see some yard sign for those graduate student. I don't know how much it will cost, though. Probably $1 to $2 per person usually.
I'm sorry, I just want to focus on the agreement that we're trying to contract out with school, shine. The yard signs, we can talk about at a different time. I can just do an update.
Okay.
Because I do know several of our high schools have done yard signs.
Okay, good. Yeah. Okay, now, the question will be, I believe it will to Gina, 2.1C dash C.
This is Gina. Is there a question about 2.1C?
Yeah, I have some, a couple of questions, like the page 11.
Yes.
Mikey, Lisa, those hourly pay assignments. We're talking about teacher after-school planning meetings. We have no more after-school anymore. We still pay, we still need to pay them, or this hourly pay, we don't use it, we don't have to pay?
It depends on the activity. If they had already done all of the work in preparing for it, we would have paid them for their hours they did to prepare.
And also, on the next page, page 12, there was 314 and 2314, which that was a Saturday we trained the staff to, in the trainer, right? Is that the one we...
Correct. This is when we brought staff in to do all the preparation and the video preparation for doing the OLA program.
Okay, I appreciate it. I have another question about page 14. I think the last name's Wa. I'm going to pick up one, then pick up one. Teacher Saturday school, six-hour per each, by March to May 16th. Since we don't have a Saturday thing, is that what Juan mentioned about things they are our employee, we have to pay them?
So, in this case, we're giving you when the requisition dates were for. So, that tells me that this teacher worked that first weekend in March, and so that's what we're paying them for, for the weekend that they did work before all of this happened.
Okay, so you would document that. The last one, page 15, not page 15, I'm sorry, is about page 17, the retirement.
Wow.
Like I mentioned to the last, I mean, few minutes ago, we are having 20 people retire all on June, and I looked at retirement, elementary school, almost 17 out of the 20 there. What is our plan for the future on this matter?
So, we're in process of working and putting together a virtual interviewing experience. At this point, with declining enrollment, we are prudently staffing, and we will be monitoring and watching our enrollment. Currently, where we're down is at the elementary levels, and so, it does benefit us that we have quite a few elementary teachers that are retiring. But we will be working carefully once we know what the enrollment is looking like a little bit to staff... a little bit to staff as we need to. Currently, we believe we will hire somewhere around maybe 15 teachers if our numbers stay the way they're looking. And if our numbers go down, then we will hold. In particular with the elementary, we are going to move slowly in that because that is where we're down right now.
Okay.
In our enrollment.
Thank you. The second, the another part is the page 18, Kosta, I think the name is Raul, is that right? Raul Kosta, limited term? This is also, is that as needed? Or they are regular, regular staff that we're using only for noon supervisor? Because we don't have any anymore?
Yes, so part of the requirement that we had from the state was that anyone we had in limited-term positions that were working, we had them continue. And these staff members, many of them are helping us with our lunch service at some of the sites.
The last part, page 19, we do know a lot of behavior, some students, behavior A. Those are the six hours per day? Are they still doing that for, you know, the children who have a special needs? And they contact the student daily? Or what is their role right now on page 19?
So the, you mean like the parent educators?
Yeah, the behavior A specializing.
So it depends. Special ed has been working with families and kids and as we need to have them work interactively within the classroom with the teacher and the student, we're doing that. Some of our parent educators are assisting with lunch service. But again, we're following the practice that was put in place by the... Sorry, I can't think of the word. The order from the state to continue to pay our permanent and limited-term people.
Okay, yeah, I know that. So I just want to make clear people understand that. I really appreciate detail.
No problem.
Personal, thank you. That'll be my questions, thank you.
Sophia, so do you want to put those back on the consent calendar or you want to remove them and vote on that?
No, just back to the vote, yeah, I'm okay now.
Actually, I had two questions.
Yeah, well, okay, did you want to pull an item also?
It was the same two items.
Okay, you want to discuss them now?
Yes. Regarding 1.1C, I guess it's $15,000. My understanding is that there was a formal RFP that was issued. What are we actually getting for $15,000? I have no idea. I've heard that there's some people going in to give some speeches already, but I don't know, like, it's, to me, it sounds like it's a buy a hundred-dollar Microsoft program and you're done. But what costs $15,000? Why is it that cost? What is the graduation actually going to look like? Because if we're approving a contract, I'd like to know what we're actually getting.
Well, again, let me, this was Dr. Sue. Again, the $15,000 is spread across all five of our high schools. So just imagine that, you know, the, there's a production team who comes to the school. And for example, at Cerritos High School, there's a backdrop for the high school with their logos, et cetera. The principals will be making speeches as well as the students. There are some who may be performing. And so each school will have a slightly different sort of a makeup for that virtual graduation. But it's done very professionally. And I know that during the period, they will also have the pomp and circumstance as well as the reading of all the names for each of the students.
Okay, so the main cost of the $15,000 is not necessarily just for a computer program?
Oh, no, it's not, it's the staff. There's a whole team that comes to the auditorium to film the speakers.
Okay, and so I've heard that some people are already going to the schools and giving their statements. So have they started work on the contract already?
I'm sorry, but because we only have one board meeting each month, we were only able to put this together for this month, for today.
Okay, so this is retroactively approving a contract?
Correct.
Okay, it's ratifying on existing, which is fine. You have to study it. I just thought it was prospective and it looks like it's retrospective approval of... So if we don't approve it, then there's a big problem.
Yes, right.
I just wanted to declare because it makes a difference as to how deeply I ask questions. I just didn't know, I know it goes over on many different schools, but you know, if you have one person or if you have 20,000 people, it's the same computer program. So eventually, I'd like to see what it actually means. If it's just, does every graduate get to virtually shake somebody's hand? Does any board member get involved with this? Because I know that...
I know that President Rios will be making a speech as well to accept the classes of 2020. She did it today, I think. And then I made a speech as well. But there are a lot of speeches that are done by the valedictorians, salutatorians, et cetera. But every, again, every high school does it slightly different.
I see. Because, so I would like to, I know some people at Cerritos High School and so I don't have to have a specific role. Obviously, that would be the president's role. But, you know, I wouldn't mind saying goodbye or congratulations to one or some of the grads there at Cerritos or Whitney or Artisia and Gar. And so I'm guessing that this contract does not include, obviously, signs, but it includes a backdrop and it doesn't include fireworks, it sounds like.
No, no.
Includes decorations. It doesn't include a parade, I'm guessing, right?
A parade?
It doesn't include a parade, right? It's just the video.
It's a virtual graduation. So the, like, for example, let's just say the valedictorians and salutatorians would be marching through a gate at Cerritos High School, for example. And they'll be featured on footage.
Okay, but nobody else?
I'm sorry?
For example, the regular graduates, they won't be going through those gates?
I think they're using the photos from either with their caps and gowns on or in some cases, it's their choice whether they want to use their senior year photo that's in their yearbook or the ones that they are going to have in their caps and gowns.
Okay, so like, let's say I'm just a regular senior and is that video company coming to my house to video? Or am I going to the school to video?
No, the students would be going to the schools to do the videos. The company would not go to the students' homes.
Okay, so then each of the students, each of the students will set appointments, maybe 30 minutes or an hour apart, and do the video. Do they get to say anything? Normally, they wouldn't get...
No, some of them will be making speeches, yes.
But like the regular, regular person, is there like a virtual handshake?
I don't think so. I think it's the footage will just look at the senior or the students in their caps and gowns, the photo.
All right, and there's no, it's not a VR experience, right? Where you would put on a goggle, look around?
No, 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 no. We will make sure that once this is done, we will send it to the entire community as well as to the board as well.
No, no, what I'm saying is it's not, it's a video. So it's not a, when the students see it, they'll see it on their phone. They won't see like, it won't be like a surround sound VR like you've seen at some of those video game places.
No.
Okay, I just want to know because it, you know, it's a good amount of money and we have no idea what a virtual graduation looks like. And unfortunately, people have been asking me the question.
Okay, thank you.
And the other question is on 1C.
Okay, go ahead.
Just want to put to rest, I think this is Dr. Zito, that we're not actually paying, we're paying people, paying part-time people as well, but they're actually doing something for their pay, right?
Can you repeat that one more time? I'm sorry, Mr. Nishi.
So I know that everybody's getting paid, also part-time people. But there's no situation where people are getting paid to do nothing. There's some task for them to do. I'm guessing, but like the substitute teachers that don't have a substitute, they don't, we're not continuing them on the payroll, right?
Correct. So everyone, everyone who is still on pay is doing some type of work. And none of our substitutes that were day-to-day subs, whether they were classified or certificated, are being paid at all. Most of them, back when this happened, we let them know that we wouldn't be able to pay them and there wouldn't be work. And so they have applied for unemployment.
Okay, great, thank you. That's it. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay, we also have item 3.3C polls. Discussion?
Thank you, Madam President. This is Chris Apadaka for Sierra Seven. Really quick, I just wanted to remind my fellow board members that we've had this agenda for quite some time and typically consent calendar is not discussion unless we pull it apart, steps to vote on separately. So much I think that's been said tonight could have been answered many days ago with an email to the superintendent or cabinet. So just wanted to remind everyone, we've had this quite some time and this meeting is already going to turn out to be a long one. Consent typically a quick vote on things that we've already discussed and been informed on. That's 3.3C. I want to take this opportunity quickly to thank the ABC Adult School and the Hawaiian Gardens Food Bank, who, you know, we're going to be renewing this contract with them. So specifically, the Moskowitz Foundation, Sal Flores, who put together this partnership between our great little city as well as with the ABC Adult School. So thank you to them for their continued support in making sure that our adult school is able to branch out and reach those people who aren't able to make it to campus in person. That's it, thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you, anyone else? Okay, roll call please, Danielle. Again, this is voting on the consent calendar.
Okay, Mr. Apadaka?
Yes.
Mr. La?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. We are now moving on to the action items. And we will be voting on each item by roll call. So the next item is 1.2-A, Resolution 19-94, to order biannual governing board election. May I have a motion to adopt Resolution 1994 to order biannual governing board election on Tuesday, November 3, 2020? Famo, Mendoza?
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Sue?
Thank you so much, President Rios. You know, we have an election coming up on November 3, 2020. We will have four board members who have been expired. I guess their terms have been expired. And so in order to have the board election, we need to make sure that we adopt the resolution. And so just to make sure that we know that, you know, the resolution is going to be adopted and signed by our clerk as well as, you know, the amount of money that is part of the election for this year.
All right, any public comments? Clerk you?
Uh, there is none.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Apadaka?
Yes, please.
Mr. La?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item 1.3-A, new board policy, 3515.21, unnamed aircraft systems. May I have a motion to approve new board policy, 3515.21, unmanned aircraft system?
Yes.
Famo, Mendoza, second. Dr. Sue?
Uh, we're going to have...
Sorry, Dr. Sprig.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay, I can briefly present the new board policy, 3515.21, unmanned aircraft system drones for school use only. The opening paragraph states that the board recognizes that drones may be a useful tool to enhance the instructional program and assist with district operations. And it states that in order to avoid disruption and maintain safety, security, and privacy of students, staff, and visitors, that any employee desiring to use a drone on or over district property shall submit a written request for permission to the superintendent or designate. The policy defines a drone as a small unmanned aircraft system weighing less than 55 pounds that is operated remotely without the possibility of direct human intervention from within or on the aircraft. The policy states that the superintendent or designate may grant permission to district employees and students for the use of drones only if the planned activity supports instructional, co-curricular, extracurricular, athletic, or operational purposes. It states that students shall only operate a drone on or over district property under the direct supervision of an employee who has been authorized by the district. It also states that the superintendent or designate may grant permission to other school districts who are requesting to operate a drone over district property in collaboration with the district for special events, provided that the visiting district agrees to hold ABC harmless from any claims of harm to individuals or property. It states that in determining whether to grant permission for the requested use of a drone, that the superintendent or designate shall consider the intended purpose of the activity, its impact on safety, security, and privacy, and that the decision of the superintendent or designate shall be final. No permission will be provided to non-employees. It states that any district employee requesting to operate a drone over district property shall provide a description of the type of operation requested, flight location, date and time, anticipated duration, and whether photos or videos will be taken. In addition, an employee must present a copy of his or her certificate of waiver or authorization by the Federal Aviation Administration. Any district employee authorized to use a drone on district property shall sign an acknowledgement that they understand the district policy, federal law, state law, and any other regulations. When drones are authorized, the superintendent or designate will notify the drone operator of the following: that the operator is responsible for complying with federal, state, and local regulations; that the drone will not be flown at nighttime; it will not be flown above 400 feet or over any people unless they are in a covered structure; and that the operator will maintain the visual line of sight with the... and that the operator will maintain the visual line of sight with the drone at all times. Secondly, that the drone shall be kept away from any reasonably considered area that's considered private, such as restrooms, locker rooms, and individual homes. And finally, that the district reserves the right to rescind authorization for use of drones at any time. And that ends my presentation.
Thank you. Any public comments?
Um, there are no public comments unless Scott Smith receives some.
Uh, discussion?
Yes, Madam President, Mendoza, I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
A question or request. Dr. Sprig, thank you so much. On page 45, the last paragraph, the last sentence that says anticipated duration and whether photos and or video will be taken. Can we add also if it's going to be posted anywhere, such as social media, so that we can request photo releases from any employees or any students that we need to have those on file?
Um, I could maybe defer that to Gina in Human Resources.
This is Dr. Zelo. Yeah, we can definitely add pieces about making sure we notify if it's going to be posted. And if there's anyone that would be visible anyways, we would already need to have that permission to photograph.
Okay, so can we add this? Because I notice that whether photos and or video will be taken and/or posted on social media or any other platform?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
I have one amendment to the board policy. And that would be to delete the clause that delimits our policy to aircraft weighing less than 55 pounds. I'd like to take that part out that says weighing less than 55 pounds. Simply because if somebody has an aircraft that's 56 pounds, then none of this applies. FAA, by the way, might apply. But if they don't regulate the, this particular area, then we would be basically kind of hopeless or we have no rules against something that would be 56 pounds. And so that's why I'm hoping that we can broaden this to the higher number. If there is a federal regulation, and probably there is, with something that's greater, it will be up to the federal government to enforce something like that. And under their supremacy clause, they'd have the right to do. And we would obviously be subordinate to that. But at least we would have our own rules that would relate to just drones. Because I would hate for somebody to think they can get around it by just adding a couple of bricks to their drone and doing whatever the heck they want. So that's my only amendment to this particular thing, to make it more powerful for our school board and our administrators to not have to weigh every single drone that flies overhead to see if they can regulate it.
This is Dr. Zelo. And we can definitely remove that language and just make it an aircraft that is operated remotely.
Thank you.
Sue, have a question. Sue, have a question. So I have a very simple question. So at the present time, who uses, are we using drones?
So this is Dr. Zelo. Colin, you can speak in if you want to as well. I know sometimes they're used in our different classes, depending on what they're doing. Sometimes they're using them for STEM activities. Sometimes they're using them, I know at the Digital Arts Academy at GARR, they use them a lot to get big aerial shots that the kids would then use in their photo shopping and things like that. So it just kind of depends on the situation. But most of them are used for academic-type purposes. Sometimes they are used also during athletic practices where they will be up in the air at the end of the field taking photographs and filming. And then that is the film that the students will watch to look at and review their plays and their practices and their techniques.
Another question is, who would be using the drone? Is that the students or the staff, teachers?
In this case, it would be both.
Yeah.
Both. Okay, so it is not for administration or any of the other purpose, but because it involves the students, I think, yeah, having a very strict policy is very important so that we can prevent any abuse or problems down the line. Thank you.
Okay.
That's the end of my question.
Okay, roll call please.
Okay, will this roll call be on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, if so, I need a second.
Becky, Mendoza?
Yes, second, Sophia.
Thank you. Mr. Apadaka?
Yes.
Mr. La?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, next item is 1.4- A Revised Administrative Regulation 4112, Appointment and Conditions of Employment. May I have a motion to approve revised administrative regulation 4112, Appointment and Condition of Employment?
Second. We need a second.
Mendoza, second.
Hey, Dr. Zelo?
Good evening again. So this board policy is one that we use in regard to the hiring of our certificated personnel and the requirements for that. If you'll notice, the last time it was revived was in 1988. And so what you see here is just an update of language. And so an updating of the things that were required to collect and use. And so the original board policy, you see, we've just lined it out. And so we've just set up the new items that we use regularly, that we've been using for a while. When we appoint an individual to a certificated position, not only with registering their certificated documents, that they have all of the basic skills required, that we do fingerprinting, that they've not been convicted of a violent felony or anything like that, that they've not been convicted of any sex crimes, that they're not required to register as a sex offender, and all of those pieces, that they don't have any controlled substance offenses, that we have all of their examinations required, either physical or judicial justice testing, et cetera. And then if they have any military service, that we have that information as needed. And then we still collect their oath or affirmation of allegiance to the government as well as other things that are required, either by collective bargaining or for health benefits, things like that. But we tried to update this to be more reflective of what happens when you are hired and the items that we must collect before we can have you as an employee.
Okay, any? Was that it, Dr. Zelo?
Yes.
Okay, any public comments? Okay, discussion?
There is none.
Okay, Danielle, roll call please.
Mr. Apadaka?
Yes.
Mr. La?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item 1.5- A May I Have a Motion to Approve New Board Policy 4111.2 slash 4211.2 slash 4311.2, Legal Status Requirement?
Apadaka, so move.
Sophie, second.
Dr. Zelo?
So this is a new board policy we're bringing. And it basically is indicating a practice that we have done for many years. We just didn't have a policy that noted it. And so as you can see, we're slowly going through all of our HR policies, trying to bring them up to date as they are there or not there. But this delineates the process we use in regard to any employees who are able to work but are not U.S. citizens. And that we go through the process of having them complete the I-9, which is required by the government, and that we keep all of that in accordance with the law and all of the processes required for the I-9 documentation for employees.
Okay, any public comments? Any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Apadaka?
Yes.
Mr. La?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 2.2- A May I have a motion to publicly disclose the tentative agreement with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees AFL-CIO Local 2229, Council 36, in accordance with provisions AB 1200 and conduct a public hearing on the components and the disclosure?
Apadaka, so move.
Second, Sophia.
Mr. Wen?
Thank you. Good evening. So the AB 1200 requires that we have to disclose the cost of the tentative agreement that should the board choose to consider them. This is the tentative agreement with APSME, which is the board item 2.3A, following this disclosure. So the parameters of the agreement is within what the board approved back in September. Very similar or exactly with the agreement with the teacher group, where we are providing a 3% on schedule, effective January 1st, 2020, and a 2% one-time off-schedule pay. So the cost here on page 54 is $265,000 ongoing for the current year and about $277,000 ongoing for next year, I mean, $229,000 ongoing for next year, and a one-time paid up $277,000. So this is for the APSME group. The cost of this agreement has been incorporated and built into the budget back in March when the board approved the second interim. So there's no adjustment needed to be made to the budget. It has already built into the budget for the current year. So AB 1200 has been submitted to the county this disclosure, and they have approved it. We have to certify, I personally and Dr. Su have to certify that the district has sufficient resources to meet the obligations of this agreement. And we have certified so. So this is the disclosure of the cost for the tentative agreement. This is something that the board approved back in September for the current year for compensation for all units. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. Any public comments?
Oh, there's none, Madam President.
Discussion?
I have a comment. Sue? I just want to make it clear with the public that this was for school year 2019, 2020, and has already been approved with the budget from 2019, 2020. And we board have already approved in 2019, September, as Twan said. So just wanted to make it clear because, you know, it's pandemic and budget is tight. But this is already something that we've already approved.
Anyone else?
Yes, this is Ernie, Madam President. So the impact on our budget, additional impact is $229,978 in terms of additional obligation that we have. Is that correct?
Correct. That is for next year.
And in the grand, I guess that's, and that is the following. What if our projected revenues are a lot? Let's say it's the worst-case scenario. We are still, we're still bound to this $229, correct?
That is correct. So, and that's a good question. I appreciate that. This is something that the board has approved back in September. And we want to be consistent and send a consistent message to all of our employees that we want to treat them the same equally. So if we need to make adjustments next year, if the budget situation come in is worse than what we expected, then we will do that with all groups together. Because at this point, you know, the board approved this for all groups, and we have only taken the item to the board for the teacher union group and not the other groups. So tonight, we're taking it all to the board for approval to clear out this year and make sure that everyone is on the same page this year. So that if we have to make adjustments, at least we have the same starting point with all union groups.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying that we should, please, hopefully, nobody isn't thinking that I'm implying that we would change our previous guidance and that we would be inconsistent. That's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying that, you know, we've had a massive pandemic. People lost, losing their jobs. And so some people may not understand why we would vote to increase. So I need to explain that the impact is not as tremendous. And that this is something that we have kind of been bound to. That's basically the whole purpose. Not, I'm not to say that we're going to be inconsistent and go back on our promises. That's not what I'm going to say. I just need to.
Thank you. And I want to point out that the $229,978 is only for this group. So if you add all the groups together, it potentially is going to be more. But to be transparent, I'm pointing out that this is only for the APSME group. As you can see at the later items, the cost for the other units.
Right. This is for all the employees that are in that section. So that's, it's not insubstantial, but it's not in the large budget. It's not crazy. Anyway, thank you. No further questions.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Twan. Anyone else? Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Apadaka?
Yes.
Mr. La?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Oh, yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the tentative agreement between the Board of Education and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees AFL-CIO Local 2229, Council 36, amending Article 7, Compensation for the 2019, 2020 School Year?
So move, Sue.
Becky, Mendoza?
We have law.
Dr. Zelo?
Good evening. So what you have here is the words that we put on the page that match what Mr. Wen did in terms of the financial outcomes. You'll see that we had a 3% increase beginning January 1st of 2020, a 2% off-schedule pay for the 1920 school year for those who were in employed active status through December 31st of 2019. And then we did a 3% off-schedule back to July 1st for those who submitted an irrevocable retirement form by May 29th to be retired by June 30th. And so that is the extent of our compensation with our APSME group.
Any public comments?
Yes. Well, not public comments, sorry.
Oh, any discussion?
I have one question. Actually, I should ask you the one too. On page 71, in the signature, certification signature? On page 71, in the signature, certification signature, I know it's like somebody signed for Dr. Mary Sue, am I correct?
Yes, you are correct.
That is correct, and that's my signature on behalf of Dr. Su because she was working remotely. I got authorized, I received authorization from Dr. Su to sign on her behalf and that's what you see, you see my name for Dr. Mary Sue, that's what it says.
Thank you.
Okay, so you, the first one's a, oh, that's a Tuan new one, okay, I got it. So legally, we're okay for that, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any, anyone else? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Apodaca?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Aye.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, may I have a motion to approve the tentative agreement between the Board of Education and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees AFL-CIO Local 2229, Council 36, Article 11, calendar for the 2021 school year?
So move, Mendoza.
Second, Sophia.
Doctor Zito?
So this calendar is our calendar for our APSME employees. It contains information in regard to the start times and return that we typically have for our nutrition services and our bus drivers. And so we're putting a calendar in place as normal and then as we face different issues with the changing situations with COVID-19, we will adjust.
Okay, any public comment? No, any discussion?
There's none.
Discussion? No, okay, Danielle, roll call, please.
Mr. Apodaca?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, may I have a motion to publicly disclose the tentative agreement with California School Employees and the ABC Chapter 24 in accordance with provisions of AB 1200 and conduct a public hearing on the components of the disclosure.
Apodaca, so move.
Second, Mendoza. Mr. Wen?
Thank you, Dr. Rios. This is similar to the previous item, tentative agreement disclosure, the AB 1200, public disclosure of the cost of the agreement that the Board is about to enter into or about to consider. So this is for the CSEA unit, the exact same within the parameters that provided, given to the Board for all groups, a 3% on schedule effective January 1st to 2020 and a 2% off schedule. So I just want to report out the cost of this agreement for the current year, ongoing cost is $289,000, $243,000. And for next year, the ongoing cost is $250,000, $290,000, I'm sorry, and a one-time cost of So again, this has been approved by the Board previously or authorized by the Board. It's been incorporated into the budget as the second interim report and I'm personally certified that we have sufficient resources to meet this obligation that the Board is about to vote on. So this is public disclosure of the cost of the agreement for this year with CSEA. That is the end of my report.
Thank you, any public comment?
There is none, Madam President.
Thank you, any discussion?
Yes, one question, comment, Madam President.
Go ahead.
Just wanted to note that ongoing for the first time, it's $289, the one-time is $302, and the ongoing for the following fiscal year is actually the lowest at $250, $290. Why is it the, the later year is the lowest impact on our, additional impact on our budget?
Because although it's January 1st, it's not exactly half and half sometime because most of the employees don't start, I was going to say most, the CSE employees, we have the parent educators and we have a lot of employees don't start into August, the 11-month and the 10-month. So they didn't really make, there was no wages in the summer months. So if you approve them effective January 1st to June, they actually work more time than the previous six months. It's not exactly half and half. The calendar year works that way, but the work year doesn't work that way. So the cost is actually a little bit more in the current year and less in the next year because next year from July to December, they actually work less than January 1st to June 30th. I hope that answered the question. It's not exactly 50/50 percent half, it's actually a little bit more this year, but it adds up to a 3% because of the timing of certain employees, they don't start in July. If everyone starts in July 1st, then it would be exactly half and half. But we have a lot of 10-months and 11-months employee that within this unit and that's why the cost is a little bit more this year and less next year.
But just for argument's sake, the following contract negotiation, I mean, I'm guessing that the 2019-2020 is $289, and you're saying that this $250 for the 2020-2021 is actually more than the $289 impact because it's covering a shorter period of time. But then we'll have a new contract for that other additional period, correct?
Correct, so the current year, the impact is a little bit more because of the work, their work time is more between January 1st and June 30th. Next year, the impact is less because again, they, some of them don't work in July and August.
Right, okay. And then we'll be negotiating the next one. All right, thank you. One question.
Hey, thank you, any more public, I mean, any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Apodaca?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, may I have a motion to approve the 2019-2020 tentative agreement between the Board of Education and the California School Employees Association, CSCE, and ABC Chapter 24, amending Article VII, compensation for the 2019-2020 school year?
So move.
Mendoza? Doctor Zito?
Second.
Oh, I thought I heard a second, second? Mendoza, second.
Doctor Zito? So again, what you have in front of you is our written language with our unit showing the 3% salary increase on schedule beginning January 1st of 2020, the 2% off-schedule payment for the 2019-20 school year for employees who are in active status up and through December 31st. And then the irrevocable retirement agreement where employees who submit their retirement by May 29th will receive a 3% retro back to July 1st if they're retiring by July, excuse me, by June 30th.
Public comment?
There is none, Madam President.
Discussion? Discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Apodaca?
Aye.
Mr. Law? Yes. Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, item 2.7-A, may I have a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the Board of Education and California School Employees Association and ABC Chapter 24, amending Article 13, calendar and modifying Article 17, personal necessity leave with absent pay for 2020-2021 school year?
So move, Mendoza.
Sophia, second.
Okay, Doctor Zito?
Again, so this is the calendar that we have worked on with CSEA, setting up the dates and the start times and the breaks. Again, we've set that all up as if school will be happening and then as change happens with COVID-19, we will adjust if we need to.
Any public comment?
There's none, Madam President.
Discussion?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Actually, wait, wait, one question. So this contract provides three additional days of personal necessity leave? What is the fiscal impact of that?
So, we do that in light because of the fact that when we do a fall break for Thanksgiving for the teacher group, our 10- and 11-month employees who are new to the district are required to use vacation during the winter and the spring break. And by adding the fall break, they do not have accumulated enough vacation time. So the impact is they're allowed to take personal necessity days to fill that week if they don't have enough vacation time to do so. So the impact is to their own, their own days.
Right, so I think we actually discussed this before, but this is, to be fair, essentially.
Yes. It's to make sure that we don't have people going without pay because of how we've set up the teacher schedule and the calendar for students.
Exactly. That's what I wanted to make sure. Appreciate it.
Thank you, any, anyone else? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Apodaca?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, item 2.8-A, may I have a motion to approve the tentative agreement between the Board of Education and the California School Employees Association, CSCE, and ABC Chapter 24 for a master contract agreement from July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2022?
So move, Mendoza.
Second, Su.
Doctor Zito?
So we were able to finish our negotiations, which was a full contract with our CSCE unit. And so what you'll see as you go through the language changes that we made, the first section in organizational security beginning on 107 is really a removal of old language that no longer applies because of the Janus case that happened and the changes that have been made. And so we were just looking to clean up the contract to more accurately reflect what happens now. And so you'll see beginning on page 108, a cleanup of the language and adding new pieces that were required by AB 119 in terms of information that we collect and share as well as compliance. Moving into page 109 with new employee orientation, which we have already been doing and have done very well, that we wanted to put into the contract what we're doing together. And then you'll see we've added just some changes to how things happen for membership because it's different now, as well as at the bottom of 109, we added language now to expand how we do our temporary assignment to a higher classification so that our employees who are working in maybe lower classifications can get opportunities to grow and learn professionally by taking upgrades into different positions. We have piloted for a few years, some different ways to do that, and so we felt like we had good language we could use together to make that happen for our CSCE employees. And then we made some adjustments beginning on 110 to just update the language being used with our in-service growth and how things happen now traditionally or online and getting your certifications and getting your verification.
Okay, any public comment?
There's none, Madam President.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Apodaca?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Aye.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, item 2.9-A, may I have a motion to approve the tentative agreement between the Board of Education and the management confidential employees regarding compensation for the 2019-2020 school year?
So move, Mendoza.
Second, Su.
Doctor Zito?
So what you have prepared for you by Mr. Wen is the cost for this year for the ongoing and for the one-time fund for our management and confidential employees. Those are both classified and certificated managers. It includes all of our employees that help to run our schools, our mental health professionals, everyone. And then you see the cost going into the 2020-21 school year. And we did the same compensation piece with them, looking at page 112 where we did the 3% on schedule beginning January 1st, the 2% off-schedule going back for the 2019-2020 school year. And then we offered the same retirement incentive for an irrevocable retirement as of June 30th that they would have the 3% back to July 1st.
Okay, any public comment? Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Apodaca?
Aye.
Mr. Law?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, item 2.10-A, may I have a motion to approve the tentative agreement between the Board of Education and the management confidential employees regarding duty year calendar for the 2020-2021 school year?
So move, Mendoza.
Sophia, second.
Doctor Zito?
So finally, this is our last calendar with our management confidential, basically delineating out when things happen during the school year for planning not only the school year, but their work time. And again, as things change with COVID-19, if we have to adjust, we will work together to do that.
Okay, any public comment?
There's none, Madam President.
Discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Yes, I have a question.
Oh, back up, okay, go ahead.
Su.
Uh-huh. Go ahead.
So for the annual calendar, the school year calendar, I know that this has been seen for the past few years, but just one factor to think about is the semester ending at the end of January rather than end of December. I don't know how efficient that is for the high school especially because, you know, they have to come back and take the final test and, you know, so forth. And then the second factor, I know that we discussed this, this came up before. And then, the second factor, I know that we discussed this, this came up before, the second factor is that, you know, many, you know, the students, high school students, right, juniors, seniors, even sophomores, especially with the AP exams, they end by, you know, third week of May, and then, most of the work is done by end of May. So, I wonder if we can think about pushing one week, you know, for the future at least? Is that something that we can, you know, put it into discussion for next year?
Absolutely. We can always discuss that and look at that with our groups.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Madam President. I'd have a small comment, too.
Go ahead.
So, I think Sue, you may have the same experience. My daughter's like studying during her Christmas break, even though there's a prohibition on getting homework, somehow, that happens and it kind of ruins family time when the finals are in like mid-January rather than, you know, before the semester ends. So, it's just one of those things, I think it'd be more family-friendly if we were able to end, and they have a real Christmas break, a real chance to recharge and do better, and then maybe even do better on this whatever test that they have in May. Oh, actually, it's the APs, right? Thank you. That's it.
I have a question.
I fully agree with Sue's suggestions.
President, this is Sophia.
Go ahead, Sophia.
If you want to move the test earlier, if you move the test earlier, because the reason other school doing it before going to the Christmas, because they have start school earlier, and we are not starting early than other schools. If you move early, would that going to affect the teacher curriculum and have to move early too? Because you're not covering certain quite curriculum, the lecture. You know what I mean here?
So, Ms. Se, if we were to look at moving it earlier, it would mean a shift, and so, you would begin everything earlier.
Right.
And you would work through all of those, the curriculum, it would just be timed differently within the school year.
But you have to be negotiated with the teacher, too, if you move the test earlier?
So, the AP exams that happen in May, we cannot move.
Right.
The testing for the state, which typically happens in April and May, there are different windows depending on when you start your school year.
Right, that's what I mean here. So, if you moved the test early, would that be affecting the teacher teaching, I mean, make sure they get all the criteria, the teaching criteria?
Good night, Madam President.
Yes, yeah.
Yes, so I think that's a discussion that we've had. I know when we got on the board, we adopted calendars, like a few calendar years at a time, but I know that we've had discussions about our interest in moving up this calendar year so that we end the semester at winter break. So, I think the recommendation is that we, as we start to move forward with negotiating new, future calendars, that we take that into consideration, Dr. Zietl.
Okay.
Yeah, great, thanks so much, appreciate it, and bye.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Apodaca?
Hi.
Mr. La?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Se?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 2.11-A. May I have a motion to approve contract and compensation for Dr. Mary Su, Superintendent, Tuan Wen, Assistant Superintendent of Business Services/Chief Financial Officer, Dr. Valencia Mayfield, Second Assistant Superintendent, Academic Services, and Dr. Gina Zietl, Assistant Superintendent, Human Resources, and extend the contract through June 30th, 2023?
Tomo Mendoza?
Second, Sophia.
Okay, pursuant to government code section 54953 subdivision C, three, as President, I am providing this oral summary of the salary and or fringe benefit increased recommendation for the following administrators. For the position of Superintendent, the term of renewed employment contract between the district and the superintendent is from July 1st, 2019, to June 30th, 2023. The new salary to be paid to the superintendent is $256,949 for the 2019-2020 school year, plus a one-time payment equal to 2% of annual compensation and $256,949 with salaries for the following years, subject to future board action. Annual doctorate stipend in the amount of $1,500, and there are no additional changes in compensation. For the position of Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, Chief Financial Officer, the term of the renewed employment contract between the district and the Assistant Superintendent Business Services, Chief Financial Officer is from July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2023. The new salary to be paid to the Assistant Superintendent of Business Chief Financial Officer is $186,077 for the 2019-2020 school year, plus a one-time payment equal to 2% of annual compensation and $186,077 with salaries for following years, subject to future board action. There are no additional changes in compensation. For the position of Assistant Superintendent, Human Resources, the term of renewed employment contract between the district and the Assistant Superintendent, Human Resources, from July 1st, 2019 through June 30th, 2023. The new salary to be paid to the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources is $182,415 for the 2019-2020 school year, plus a one-time payment equal to 2% of annual compensation and $182,415 with salaries for following years, subject to future board action. Annual doctorate stipend in the amount of $1,500, and there are no additional changes in compensation. For the position of Assistant Superintendent of Academic Services, the term of renewed employment contract between the district and the Assistant Superintendent of Academic Services is from July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2023. The new salary to be paid to the Assistant Superintendent of Academic Services is $182,415 for the 2019-2020 school year, plus a one-time payment equal to 2% of annual compensation and $182,415 with salaries for the following years, subject to future board action. Annual doctorate stipend in the amount of $1,500. There are no additional changes in compensation. Mr. Wen?
Thank you. Thank you, President, Dr. President Rios. So, this is what the board again approved, very similar, exactly the same to all the other groups, and this is for the contract employees.
Any public comment? Discussion?
Just one.
Roll call, oh, go ahead.
Board Member Ernie Nishi, just to note that I think there's some districts that even have an other additional position, I think an Assistant Superintendent, and we don't have that, so we're actually saving that particular dollar amount. Is that right?
Deputy.
Deputy, correct.
Yes, that's correct.
So, we're saving that. Okay, that's it.
Okay, anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Apodaca?
Hi.
Mr. La?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Se?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 2.12-A. May I have a motion to approve Resolution 19-95 proclaiming May 6, 2020, as the day of the employee to honor all ABC school district employees?
Tomo Mendoza?
Second.
Second, Sue.
Public comment?
There's none, Madam President.
Discussion?
Madam President, no discussion.
Well deserved.
Sorry. Madam President, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say that this year is especially rewarding to do this because during this time of COVID-19, I think we're depending more on our staff than we ever have because it's not easy being away from our kids. I know we're all going through, you know, our own challenges at home, so I just want to say that just to pass this resolution of day of the employee to recognize all of our staff in our district, I just want to say thank you, a big thank you, especially this year. That's it, Madam President.
Thank you, and I think you echo, I mean, we all can echo those sentiments, so thank you for sharing that. Roll call, please.
Mr. Apodaca?
Hi.
Mr. La?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes, yes, yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Se?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, moving on to academic services, contract with Sabio. May I have a motion to approve request to contract with Sabio to provide a developer course offered at adult school for 2020-21 school year?
Tomo Mendoza?
Second.
Public comment?
There's none, Madam President.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Apodaca?
Hi.
Mr. La?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Se?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, item 3.6-A. May I have a motion to approve request to enter a memorandum of agreement with E43 Productions to work with ABC Adult School staff to coordinate a vision and schedule for video projects?
Tomo Mendoza?
Second, Sue.
Public comment?
There's none, Madam President.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Apodaca?
Hi.
Mr. La?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Se?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, item 3.7-A. May I have a motion to approve request to submit an application for the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security for CARES Act granted grant for the 2019-2020 school year?
Tomo Mendoza?
Second, Sue.
Public comment?
There's none, Madam President.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Apodaca?
Hi.
Mr. La?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Se?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 3.8-A. May I have a motion to approve request to amend this Ridos College Dual Enrollment Course Agreement to include the courses titled Math 155, comma History of Rock and Roll, comma Introduction to Law, and adopt two textbooks titles, What's That Sound and Intro to Law?
Tomo Mendoza?
Second, Sophia.
Public comment?
There's none, Madam President.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Sue have a question.
Go ahead.
Sue have a question.
Go ahead.
So, this is to adopt textbooks for dual enrollment courses. So, is this for any ABC high school students to be able to or allowed to take through the dual enrollment?
Good evening, Board Clerk, Sue Yu, thank you for the question. The courses that are listed on action item 3.8A are for all ABC students who are in high school enrolled in grades 11 through 12. And so, these courses will be available online this summer for our students, and students will have access to the instruction materials if they are enrolled in the course.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Apodaca?
Yes.
Mr. La?
Yes.
Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Se?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, item 3.9-A. May I have a motion to adopt Resolution 19-96 on grading policy during school dismissal and if applicable, summer of 2020?
Tomo Mendoza?
Second, Law.
Dr. Mayfield?
Good evening, Happy Cinco de Mayo. Thank you for the opportunity to present information on the grading policy. I want to acknowledge the hard work of my team and our union partners. I want to also thank Vice President Mendoza for suggesting to record this presentation and make it available for families and students. The recorded presentation will be available at our district YouTube site. Following the recorded presentation, which I will share with the board at this time, I will be available to respond to board members' questions. And so, we remove, the actual PowerPoint is also available at the district website, and the board members receive a copy of the PowerPoint. We'll show the recorded video at this time.
Good evening, Board President Dr. Oberreals, members of the board, Dr. Sue, and our school community. The board is being asked to adopt a resolution on grading during school dismissal and if applicable, summer of 2020. My name is Dr. Lindsay Moseley II, and I am the Assistant Superintendent of Academic Services. The title of my PowerPoint presentation is Resolution on Grading During Emergency School Dismissal and Summer of 2020. The public can access this presentation at the district website. Since this information is being presented telephonically, I will reference the slide number before presenting the information. Slide number two. California Department of Education Guidance on Grading. The California Department of Education, also known as CDE, provided guidance on grading to districts throughout California. In ABC, this information served as guiding principles in the development of ABC's grading policy. The guiding principles are the following. Ensure equitable grading policies that do not harm students. Preserve the progress students made prior to school dismissal. Determine the impact on students' options on college admissions. Examine the impact on high school graduation requirements. Consider the needs of all students. Students who are English language learners, students who are homeless and foster youth, students who come from families that are economically disadvantaged, and students with disabilities. Consider the needs of students with different access and support in distance learning. Slide number three. In addition to guidance from the CDE, colleges and universities also submitted their positions on the grade requirement for courses completed during the winter, spring, or summer of 2020. On this slide, I've highlighted the grading information from the University of California, which includes or encompasses all UCs in California, for example, UC Irvine, UCLA, UC Berkeley, et cetera. The UCs state that they will accept credit in lieu of letter grades for students who have been accepted for Fall 2020, and will also accept credit for students who may apply in the Fall of 2021, 2022, or 2023. The grades students earn during this period of time will not be used in the CDE calculation for admissions, but will count towards meeting the A to G requirement. The California State Universities, known as CSU, which include Cal State Long Beach, Cal State Fullerton, et cetera, have also stated- have also stated that they will accept credit in lieu of letter grades for students who are accepted for the fall 2020 and for students who may apply for the fall 2021, winter 2022, and spring 2022 admission cycles. The CSU's have also stated that the grades students earn during this period of time will not be used in the GPA calculation, but will count towards meeting the A to G requirement. The Association of Independent California Colleges and Universities represents 84 colleges and universities throughout California and includes the following schools. Loyola Marymount University, Pepperdine University, University of Laverne, University of Southern California, Chapman University, et cetera. This organization of colleges and universities have also stated that they will accept past grades in lieu of letter grades and are still determining if those grades will translate into a student's GPA. The community colleges, which includes the Ridos Community College, Long Beach Community College, Viper Community College, et cetera, have indicated that all applicants are accepted for enrollment regardless of their GPA. The guidance from these colleges and universities was used to inform ABC's grading policy and confirms that students who earn credit during this period of distant learning remain eligible to apply to colleges and universities throughout California. Slide number four. ABC grading policy. The ABC grading policy considers the needs of students with different access to support and considers the needs of students who are English language learners, foster and homeless youth, economically disadvantaged, and who are students with disabilities. The ABC grading policy preserves the progress students made prior to school dismissal by examining the impact on students' graduation requirements and college aspirations. The ABC grading policy is equitable and designed to do no harm to students' academic progression during this period of learning at home. The ABC grading policy communicates the level of student engagement and continued learning and provides an evaluation of student work during this period of school dismissal. In our guiding principles, we consider the needs of all students and recognize that the needs of students differ. Therefore, a grading system based on the percentage of assignments completed more accurately depicts the level of student engagement during distant learning. Teachers' comments will inform families of the quality of the work they received. In ABC, there is a grading policy for elementary, middle school, high school, and our continuation schools. We will now review each of these grading policies. Slide number five. Elementary School Third Trimester. Students in elementary school have three grading periods. The third trimester is the last grading period for elementary school. The report card grades for the third trimester communicate the student's level of participation and provides information on the quality of the student work submitted or returned. Parents in elementary school are familiar with a four-point rubric model. The difference is that the scores students earn during the third trimester are based on the percentage of assignments, which can include tests, class assignments, projects, portfolios that students submit or return. For example, if a student turns in 86% to 100% of their assignments, the student will earn a four on their report card. If a student submits or returns less than 20% of their assignments, the student will earn a one on their report card. The students will receive a score of one to four on their report card for the following subjects. English Language Arts, English Language Development as applicable, Mathematics, History, Social Science, Science, and Spanish Language Arts as applicable. In this section of the report card titled Habits of Success, teachers will evaluate the quality of student work. Students will receive an E for excellent, S for satisfactory, or I for inconsistent, or N for needs improvement for each habit of success. The habits of success indicators are used to evaluate the quality of student work, and they are the following. Produce neat and careful work, complete assignments, and return accurate assignments. Slide number six. Middle School Second Semester and Summer 2020. Families who attended elementary school in ABC will feel familiar with the middle school report card. Students in middle school still rely on their family for setting boundaries and structures in their school day. While students are moving toward becoming more independent, we recognize that students at this age level are still dependent on adults for guidance. Also, at the middle school level, the courses students take do not earn credits towards graduation. Instead, students are required to pass courses that prepare them for a successful transition to high school. As a result, a four-point rubric model is the best system for communicating to families their child's progress during distant learning. At the middle school level, the percentage required for each four differs from the elementary school report card. For example, on the elementary report card, if a student turns in 86% or more of their assignments, the students will earn a four on their report card grade, while a middle school student must complete at least 80% or more of their assignments to earn a four on their report card grade. Students will receive a score of one to four for each class they are currently taking. In the comment section on the report card, teachers will select one of these statements to describe the quality of the student's work. The teacher will give a student outstanding performance if the quality of the student's work reflects a high percentage of correct responses on 80 to 100% of the assignments submitted. Slide number seven, High School Second Semester and Summer 2020. Students in high school may receive a grade of credit, incomplete, or no credit for each class they are currently taking. Students' grades are also based on the percentage of assignments submitted. The coursework at the high school level is extremely difficult. Students in many cases are working independently to grasp difficult concepts to complete their assignments. While teachers are committed to assisting students, we acknowledge that the day-to-day access and interaction with students is not available to the same extent prior to school dismissal. After examining the percentages traditionally used to assign a letter grade of A, B, C, D, or F, it was determined that if a student completes and submits 51% to 100% of their assignments, the student will earn five credits and will receive credit on their report card and transcript. If a student completes and submits 40% to 50% of their assignments, the students will receive incomplete on their report card and transcript. The student will not earn credit and will be provided an opportunity to complete the remainder of the course. If a student completes less than 40% of their assignments, the student will receive no credit on their report card and transcript. The student will not earn credit and will be provided an opportunity to complete the entire course. Teachers will use the comment section of the report card to evaluate the quality of the student's work. The same comments previously discussed for middle school are also applicable for students in high school. Slide eight. Tracy High School and ABC Secondary School are continuation programs offered in ABC. Students attending these high schools currently earn full credit, partial credit, or no credit. Students will remain on this grading system, with the difference being that the credits earned are based on the percentage of assignments completed and submitted for each class. In order to earn the full five credits, students must submit 50% or more of their assignments. The same comments previously discussed also apply to students who are at Tracy High School and ABC Secondary School. The teachers will use the comment section to evaluate the quality of student work. Slide nine. Preserve progress and provide opportunity for progress. The second semester grade is based on the grade students earned in the third quarter and their level of engagement in learning during fourth quarter middle school. Students who earned an A, B, C, or D grade during the third quarter have passed the first half of the second semester. Therefore, their fourth quarter work will determine if the student receives a four, three, or two. Notice, if a student passes the first half of the second semester, the lowest grade they can earn is a two. High School. Students who earned an A, B, C, or D grade during the third quarter have passed the first half of the second semester. Therefore, their fourth quarter work will determine if the student receives credit or incomplete. Notice, that if a high school student passes the first half of second semester, the lowest grade they can receive is incomplete. For students in middle or high school who earned an F during the third quarter, they did not pass the first half of the second semester. The range of possibility includes earning a four to one for students in middle school or credit incomplete or no credit for students in high school. Slide number 10, Grade Request Form, due May 22, 2020. Students in high school can continue on the grading system used prior to school dismissal. In other words, if you are a high school student and you want letter grades on your second semester report card and transcript, you have until May 22 to submit a grade request form. On the grade request form, students can choose if they want a letter grade for all of their classes, or they may select just one or a few classes. Important to note, students who choose this option will remain on the same grading system each teacher used prior to school dismissal. Students will need to refer to the grading policy each teacher provided at the beginning of the school year to determine how their exams and assignments will be calculated in their final grade. The grading system previously described on slide seven for high school students is not applicable for students who want a letter grade. This is also true for three high school courses that are offered to students in middle school. Middle school students who are currently taking Spanish I, Spanish II, and accelerated Math 1+ Honors at Whitney High School can continue to receive a letter grade by completing and submitting the grade request form. To continue on a traditional letter grade system, which means a student can earn an A, B, C, D, or F based on exams and assignments, the student must submit a grade request form by May 22. The grade request form requires electronic signature by the student and the parent guardian. This district has also received further clarification that even if a student selects the letter grade option, the UC and CSU's will not use GPAs in their calculations for the admission cycle previously discussed on slide three. It is important that parents and guardians discuss this option with their student before submitting the form. Once the grade request form is submitted, the decision cannot be reversed. Slide number 11, Important Dates. On slide number 11, it's a list of important dates. The following criteria will be used for students who will receive a progress report. Progress reports will be available or sent to students at the elementary level who may receive a report card grade of one or two, middle school students who at the time of progress report are earning a one or two, or high school students who at the time of their progress report may earn an incomplete or no credit. Students have the option of turning in late work. For elementary school, late work is due by June 3. For students in middle and high school, the late work is due by June 1. The grade request form is not applicable to students at the elementary school level. For select courses in middle school, students must submit the grade request form by May 22. For all or a portion of the courses that students are currently taking in high school, they may submit a grade request form by May 22. Parents will have access to their child's report card on June 12 for elementary, middle, and high school. Slide 12 is a list of the resources referred to earlier from the different colleges and universities. Slide 13 serves as a reminder that in ABC, we are student-centered, and that the ABC's grading policy reflects our guiding principles to ensure an equitable grading policy that does not do harm to any of our ABC students. Thank you. That ends my presentation on our grading policy. I am available to respond to any board members' questions.
Can you tell us again, Dr. Mayfield, where this information can be found? I know it's on the YouTube channel, but you said on the website?
It is available at the district website for our grading policy. You can go to the today's board meeting section where the agenda was posted, and at the location where the agenda was posted, you will see, if you scroll down, you'll see a copy of this presentation.
Thank you. Okay, any public comment?
First line, Madam President.
And Sophia, second?
Any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes.
Sophia?
Okay.
Sophia, thanks, too.
Okay, go ahead, Sophia.
Okay, well, Dr., thank you, Dr. Mayfield. Actually, this is pretty common for most districts are using exactly what we're doing right now, the grading system. I know I checked it out on website, other schools, pretty much same. But I have a couple of questions before, on page 128, based on the book that Banda with them by the school district. Page 28, are you there?
Yes, I'm going to page 128, yes.
As I said before, as I say, it's pretty much same how the grading system in almost districts. Page 28, there's just some clarification I need to know. On the end of the sentence, say, the project, you know, this is talking about the assigned work, class assignment, project portfolios, other means, video conference appropriate to the course. So are you telling me that we are encouraged, all teachers use a video conference, am I right or wrong?
So teachers have various ways of engaging students in the online platform. We have provided a range of professional learning to support the various avenues that teachers may select from. Recently, we have provided training on video conferencing, and so that is an option that we are supporting and encouraging teachers to use as they continue to provide instruction during distant learning. But it is one of many options.
But it is one of many options that teachers can choose from.
Okay, now, I have a couple of questions to ask you. Please answer to me if you can. How many percentage that recently have we, percentage teacher really teaching online, which is we're talking about live feedback? Do you have a clue about that? Percentage of the teacher are teaching based, live feedback?
I do not have the number or the percentage of teachers who are currently using video conferencing to provide instruction. We do know that teachers are exploring that option. Again, they were just provided training about a week ago. We do know that teachers are exploring that option, and we do anticipate that we'll see an increase over the time period. We do have quite a few teachers who attended the training. I believe one training in particular had over two hundred teachers logged in learning. And so we are excited about the future of using video conferencing and seeing it used more frequently in ABC.
I do want to make a comment here, and I appreciate all the teachers. Not that easy train, I mean, change from the regular class setting and go onto the canvas and base on, a lot of situations happen to our teacher too, because their kids have to stay home, and they have family member also, you know, the house situation, there's a lot of issues that our teachers facing into it, but I want to thank you all teachers trying their best. But I do have concern about that. And second thing, I want to really ask you if you can provide some report on the next one, how many teachers really teaching online? I also like to see how many students are also staying, percentage of the students learning online too. Do you have a record on that?
We do have a record of that. Our data indicates that we, in ABC, we have about eighteen thousand six hundred and forty students this past week who were engaged in online learning. That represent about ninety-three percent of all ABC students. When we think about the seven percent of our students who may not be engaged in online, we acknowledge that we have students who are in grade TK through first grade, who when we first started our online program were using paper packets. We do want to acknowledge that some of those teachers are beginning to transition to the online platform as we continue to provide support for them. And so we are pleased with our progress, and we anticipate that that number of ninety-three percent will continue to increase as teachers feel more comfortable and find that it is an appropriate platform for providing instruction for our younger children.
Okay, now, when we're talking about the student that kind of got lost, like seven percent, you know, we can't contact them, how are we going to grade them?
The students who are in TK through kindergarten, who are, and teachers are using packages, they have been accessing or having students return their work in different platforms. Parents, family members who have access to cell phones are able to take photos of the completed work and send it to the teachers. At some elementary schools, there has systems put in place where materials can be safely returned and left until they are safe to handle by the teacher. And so schools are using different approaches to evaluate student work that was completed using packages and return. It's also one of the reasons why we're also encouraging more teachers to begin this transition to online platform, because we think it will continue to make our situation safer for reviewing and having access to student work.
Last question, because I want to give it to my colleague, I know they have a lot of questions about this. I'll come back, but last question is, I do know superintendent is meeting with the principal, right? And we heard the parents issue, you heard it at the beginning, and they're concerned about grading, they're concerned about the children, dynamic teaching, education, but what about the principal? What is their role in this situation? Because you know how some teacher not able to do this live feedback? How do principal can help them out, assist them? What are we being discussing? What do they share the concern with the superintendent or you? Do you have some summary from there?
We recognize that the needs of teachers are different, just as the needs of students are different. And so principals work directly with their teachers, and that work may involve, similar to the concept of walking classrooms, they may virtually enter students' classrooms and able to see the type of assignments that students are completing or not completing, the rigor of the course that's being offered, and how students are support. Principals in those classrooms are able to provide feedback to teachers in a similar format that they would have they physically been in the building and walking physically into those classrooms. Principals are actively engaged in contacting students and families who are not participating. So that's where a lot of their time is spent on analyzing Google reports, analysis reports to see which students have not logged into the classroom, and those principals are contacting those families directly to offer additional support, to find out what additional needs the students may have in order to become more engaged in the online platform.
My last thing, I have a lot of parents concerned about such as math. If you give it to a toddler, had them do themselves, that is very tough one, and the math and foreign language, as you mentioned before, I really wish some of my teachers kind of working hard on that one. It's not easy, it's very hard. I want to thank you to the teacher for, those people out there willing to try and did a lot of live feedback. I appreciate it, but I think we also need to help those teachers not able to do it. How do we assist them to, for the better outcome? Thank you. That'll be my end question, President.
Okay, other discussion?
How do, how do?
Yes, Madam President. Sue?
Okay, go ahead, Sue, and then Ernie.
Thank you, Dr. Valencia. That was very helpful and informative. So I have a few questions about this grading. So it's different, I mean, we have such a big diverse district, elementary, middle school, high school, continuation school, adult school, it's all different. And different socioeconomic groups, and I understand the difficulty of meeting everyone's needs. My concern, I have a few concerns. First of all, although the governor, you know, did announce for everything to stop, the essential workers have been working, and many of these essential workers in our district, the parents are, you know, whether in the market industry or the food industry, they have to work, so the kids are at home. And since we don't have any system of taking the roll call, no attendance, and I know that it's difficult for some families to check in, but we did hand out the Chrome devices and the hotspot, and then since there's no video conferencing, the kids can log in and log out, you know, do the work anytime, it could be twelve or one, two AM. I'm just wondering, you know, if this continues through the summer and the fall, and even in the fall, if we have to continue this and we don't do any attendance, I'm sure that the least we can do to help some of these families is to keep the kids engaged and occupied with some sort of schoolwork and engaging, engagement with the teachers during the school hours. And I know that one of the comments from one of the parents, I think that was very well, you know, written. I wonder if our district can also look into that too. I know you guys did a lot of meetings and planning, but I could only imagine when the both parents have to work to make a living and the kids are at home, that's really difficult. And there, there's no structure, no guideline, then the kids are all over the place. So that does, I mean, I know this is a tough question for you, Dr. Valencia and Dr. Sue, but I'm just wondering, what can be done? Can something be done in the future?
Yeah, I can respond to that on a couple of levels. First of all, while we're not taking traditional attendance, we are able to see what students are logging in and who are not logging in. And so that is our way of collecting attendance based on participation and based on their logging in. When students are not actively engaged, and that's the job of the principals, our mental health support, as well as co-administrators, counselors, APs, a big role that they're playing is contacting those families to ask questions about why hasn't the student logged in, or why aren't we seeing that they're engaged frequently? Schools have developed systems where the classroom teacher notifies the administrator of students who are not actively engaged. And so our process has been that the teacher reaches out to the family first, and if they don't see a response or don't see consistent interaction, then the co-administrator, mental health provider, or principal contacts those families. So we are monitoring attendance, not in a traditional way, but we are monitoring attendance, and we are contacting those families to find out what further needs are required to better support them. Also, earlier this month, we provided to all of our families guidance documents, and included in those guidance documents were recommended schedules. And we would encourage parents to go back and revisit these guidance documents, because they do provide the structure that parents are asking for. In the guidance document, we lay out a clear plan on how students should approach their coursework, the amount of time that a student should be spending for each subject area, and so we see that as a resource that is also available to parents who are looking for more structure. That's something that they can print and make visible for their child, or have their child take a look at it on their device every day and use it as a check-in with their child to say, okay, I'm checking in from this time period to this time period, did you do your language arts? Were you engaged in your science? And so there are some resources that have been provided to our families to assist with some normacy in a school schedule that students would be familiar with. Those documents are also available at our district website.
So is it too much to ask our teachers to be checking up and engaging with the students during the regular school hours? I know that this semester is, you know, almost done, but I mean, say by fall, we're not, we still have to continue the, you know, all our learning, are we, can we upgrade it to video conferencing where the teachers are, you know, working during the school hours and engaging with the students?
I kind of look at our progression as we are currently in what we're referring to as phase three of our online LAX learning platform, and we are moving towards phase four. And for phase four, it was really about setting the stage for more video conferencing type meetings. It's not a requirement, but as you saw tonight, when you go see the video that I posted on YouTube, it was a screen castified, and so that's an example of what a teacher could be using in their classroom. So I actually wanted to see how difficult it was, and to be honest, it was very easy. One of my colleagues taught me how to do it in fifteen minutes, and we were able to, I was able to do my presentation. So we realize that we have the technology, it is available, we realize that we've provided some training, but we also know that one of the strategies that we've used successfully with our teachers is to provide what we call onsite coaching, where a coach works side by side with a teacher. And so coming in a new future, teachers will be able to sign up for more of an onsite coaching as a grade level team, as a department, or even as an individual, for teachers who feel that they still need some more support in this video conferencing platform, be it live or be it still shot. And so as we transition to phase four, which will include, you know, starting with progress report to the end of the year and into the summer and into the fall, we do anticipate seeing more and more teachers as they become more comfortable and familiar with using video conferencing. We are hoping and anticipating to see an increase in that use of that platform.
Yes, thank you. And then, I have one more question.
Hold on a second. President, I want to remind you, our meeting ending at ten-thirty, so you want to extend this, so just remind.
This will be the last question. You know, for the grading pass or no pass, I know that many districts are doing that, but I'm just wondering how that, I wonder if the counselors in the high, I mean, for the other grades, it's not as important, but for high schools, as they're preparing for the college and the challenging coursework, you know, students will lose motivation to study hard for that grade, because since it's pass no pass. But they have the option to claim the grade, and they would have to actually go on the website to request it. Now, is it too much, or has it, I don't know if it has been done, where the counselors can engage with the, have some meetings, hold the meetings with the sophomores, or hold a meeting with juniors to go over these, you know, changes online? I mean, like, I know that our executive staff have Zoom meetings every day, I wonder if the counselors can hold similar video conferencing meetings with each class or the students that they're in charge of at least once before the school's over? I love to guide our students, yeah.
Yeah, I love that idea. I know that as we move towards enrollment for the fall, our counselors are working directly with students on the courses that they're signing up for the fall, but I like the idea of having our counselors offer a similar Google Meet type gathering for students to come in and get more clarification around our grading policy and how it affects the choices that they may take. I do want to make it very clear that in ABC, our students can still receive letter grades. I think that's very important, that we make that very clear to our families, that they have a choice. And so that choice is available, and we ask that they make that choice before May twenty-second. So I will share that request for members who you, with our principals at the secondary level and middle school, to invite students into a Google Meet to answer questions that they may have regarding the grading policies that we are presenting tonight. I think that's a good idea, and we can make that available.
Yes, thank you very much.
I want to point out, fellow board members, that our meeting, that is ten-thirteen, and I know we have several comments still, so let's, I don't know if you want to go extend the meeting for another fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes? I don't know that we're going to be done at ten-thirty.
Madam President, if I may, is that, is that, my understanding was we would finish at ten-thirty because of the video capacity, however, this is a different medium, are we still restricted to ten-thirty as far as recording goes?
This is Mary Sue. The, the meeting can go on for an additional, let's just say you want to end at eleven o'clock. There's no restriction on it because of the, you know, we're doing it all telephonically tonight.
Okay, well, I definitely would like to make the limit of eleven, I think four hours mentally is about our limit.
I agree. I'd like to move to ten-thirty, I mean, eleven o'clock, though the hour.
Okay.
No later than eleven.
If I may interrupt, this is Danielle. I need a majority vote to extend the meeting to eleven.
Apadaka, no later than eleven.
Do we need to do a roll call, Danielle, or Danielle, sorry, or do we just do a unanimous?
Unanimous.
Okay, roll call. Well, no, I think we do roll call, so let's do a quick roll call.
Okay, Mr. Apadaka?
Yes.
Mr. La?
No.
Ms. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
I appreciate your giggling.
Dr. Rios?
Bye, I'm done.
We're relaxing a little bit, Maynard, yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes, Maynard.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
The motion passed is seven to one, I mean, six to one.
Okay, thank you, so let's go ahead. We're almost there, guys. Okay, Chris.
Wait, wait, I thought I was going to ask a question.
Well, we have, we have several, I think everybody wants to chime in on this, so Chris was next, and then it was Letty, and if you want to have something to say, oh, were you next, Nishi, Ernie?
I'll let Chris do that, but I'd like to have one, a couple of questions.
Yeah, I think everyone has a comment on this. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Ernie, for deferring. Sorry, Maynard, I know tomorrow we got to be up early for the early bird special to diner, but I wanted to say what we had to say with this one. So again, we've received daily briefings with regards to the grading, with regards to the accommodations that the UCs, the Cal States, amongst other universities nationwide are making, and I think that at this point, you know, we're well informed, and a lot of the questions and clarifications that have been pointed out tonight- And a lot of the questions and clarifications that, that have been pointed out tonight, I'm, I'm, I can imagine they're for the benefit of the public. Um, but at the same time, we're meeting under extraordinary circumstances to vote to move forward with the business of the people at the school district. And, uh, with regards to attendance, if we were to actually do the math, including the TK and the kindergarten, those who are doing packets right now, our attendance far exceeds not just any district here locally in the county, but nationwide. I mean, we are setting a standard because we already had this type of infrastructure somewhat in place. It was just a matter of building it out. So, I, amongst all of this, I want to take the time to thank our amazing IT staff as well as the teachers. And I, I do think it's unfair to require teachers during this time to be at their computer actively monitoring whether or not a child is there, whether it's through video, whether it's through seeing milestones on their computer. I think the work that comes out of the, the students will better gauge whether or not they're, they're doing what they should be doing. I think that our, our teachers have enough, as it is, including our staff, our cabinet staff, with what's going on globally, addressing family issues, addressing personal health issues. And, and I think it would be an encumbrance to say, "Well, you have to be available the full eight hours." Um, I, I, I mean, that's just, in my opinion, given the circumstances, it's just, it, one, it's not fair, and two, I don't think it's feasible. And I'll say it again, we can't undo in the digital classroom what's done at home. Parents, I, I understand the frustration, and I've heard it daily, but it's, I mean, we have to give our students credit as well. We have to give our students credit that they want to learn, that they want to be present. They want to have that interaction, that engagement online with their teachers. And if you've seen any of these parades that they've had with the teachers driving by in the neighborhoods from the local elementary schools, students miss their teachers. They want to be a part of that. So, um, I, I think that a lot of this has already been addressed daily in writing from our district staff. And so, I want to make sure that they get credit for that. And I also want the public to know that much, in my opinion, much of what's been shared so far tonight has already been shared with your, your board representatives. And we're a great source of information. If you want to contact us directly, or as always, just go look at the website, uh, the district website. And that concludes my comment. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Board Member Nishi?
Yes, so I have a few questions here. So, it's my understanding that the UCs and Cal States aren't going to be using this last semester grades to get them into college. Then, there is no advantage of asking for a grade. Is that right? I'm having a hard time.
Not, not quite correct, so let me restate, um, the statement there. Um, the student's coursework counts in two different areas. Uh, one area is to meet the A to G requirement. So, the A to G, A to G requirement are specific courses that students must successfully pass in order to be eligible to apply. That requirement still remains intact. What they've said is that they won't use this last semester of grades to, in their calculation of their GPAs. And so, they won't penalize a student who is receiving a credit or, or not a credit or a, or let, I'm sorry, a credit or a letter grade because they recognize that it's going to be very challenging to really determine what a credit or a letter grade means under these unusual circumstances. Um, as Board Member Say indicated earlier, every district, um, is deciding how their grading policy will look. And so, because of the range and variation, it'll be very difficult for the colleges to say that an A is an A or a B is a B. Um, and so, that's why I think they're moving away from using it in the GPA calculation. But the student still needs credit for the course in order to meet the A to G requirement.
Got it. But I, I understand that these UCs and Cal States are, somebody said they're competitive. And so, therefore, you need to get As. But if they're not going to consider the last semester grades, so I'm having a hard time getting my daughter to be motivated because she's thinking, "Well, if I go credit, no credit, then it doesn't matter if I work really hard to get an A. I should just skate by with a minimum. And then, if the UCs don't care about my last semester, uh, junior year grades, I'm done. I can't do anything to improve, so why should I even try?" That, that's where I'm kind of having, I, I have to motivate a, a junior here. And so, that's, um, that's where I'm kind of coming from in terms of this. I guess I need to see that, I need to see that slide, that, uh, slide three that you were referring to, um, because I didn't see any slides, unfortunately. I'm, I don't apparently have all that access. And the other issue I had was, um, I'm also having, I've heard from some PTA president, uh, from Cerritos, that, um, their kids have never been contacted even once. Um, since we've started this, um, online learning, I don't know if that's what, what that is about, but, um, I don't think she's alone. There's been several parents that have been telling me that they get an assignment, they'll get, uh, basically, that's it. And sure, they logged in to get the assignment, so it shows that they were logged in, but they don't know how to do that math because they just got the assignment. Or maybe there was some instruction. There could have even been a video, but nobody to answer questions as to, "I don't understand why the math teacher did X or Y or Z or, or physics." So, um, so those are the two things I had. Um, other than, you know, it's been great.
If I can address the last comment, um, I think it's important that our families remember that even though we're not physically in the buildings, that our practices of communicating with teachers still remain intact. And so, if a parent has concerns about a teacher, then the process is to contact that teacher. And to say to the teacher, "I'm concerned that my-" And, I'm sorry?
I, I think she was saying that none of the teachers had contacted her, her child at all during the last, the entire-
Yeah, then I, I would definitely encourage that parent to, um, contact the teacher of that student. I would encourage that parent to contact the counselor for their child. And if the, if they don't get a response from the teacher or at the counselor level, they're to contact the principal. Um, and so, the same manner of communication that a parent would use if they were, if kids were physically in the building, they'll still apply. And I would definitely encourage the parent to, um, initiate the contact if she feels that that level of support has not been there. Um, because we do want to be there for our students. And if for some reason, a student is feeling like they're not in contact with them, then the parents can make, uh, initiate the contact. Um, our teachers have been asked to set office hours. And so, again, just following up with that teacher and email asking, "When are your office hours?" And so, I can make an appointment to speak to the teacher during their office hours. And that could be, um, conducted through a Google Meet hangout on the, um, computer, um, where they can actually, um, engage in a conversation with the teacher. And so, I would say that those concerns should not be left unanswered and that the parent has every right to contact the, every teacher as well as the counselor and the principal of that school.
So, yeah, unfortunately, I think that, Merit, that I'm discussing, I think Dr. Su, uh, not Dr. Su, but, uh, Su Yu had referenced this. There are some parents who are in those professions that unfortunately are super busy. They could be, uh, um, a, uh, grocery worker, and they're working eighteen-hour shifts or whatever it is. And so, they won't be able to be the person to reach out as much as, you know, um, other parents that may have easier, different types of telecommuting types of jobs. So, it may not be realistic for all of our parents to be able to, to do that. It may be easier if, if there's more of, uh, of a teacher ask for, you know, to have a reach out once a week or so. I don't know. I mean, I'm just trying to think on my feet here. Because Su Yu was talking about some grocery workers and healthcare professionals, and, and I know that they are, are stressed, and they don't have the time.
Thank you.
The other, how are we going to motivate the students? If the UCs don't care about this last semester grade, except for the A through G requirements, then how do I tell my daughter to work hard, uh, other than just get by?
Well, I think that, um, a motivation could be that if your child is interested in applying to one of the schools that's listed under the Association of Independent California Colleges and Universities, um, that's a lot of our private schools. Um, those schools have not determined yet how, um, they will consider the GPAs for students who are applying. And so, it is a, a personal conversation. And so, I, we always encourage students to have their face reached and, um, wish schools. And, and so, if one of those schools fall into one of those range, um, use that as an incentive. Um, I think students who have previously been motivated by having transcripts that reflect straight As or straight Bs will still be motivated to want their transcript, their final transcript, to show consistency in that, um, they're able to earn those letter grades. And so, I know that at our last court meeting, we heard students who constantly said, "I worked hard to be a straight A student. I worked hard, um, to make honor rolls." And so, I would suggest that those students should still work hard and that their last transcript can reflect that hard work with the letter grades if they choose, um, to request letter grades at the end of the semester. And so, we want students to be strategically motivated to achieve, um, the grades that they're capable of doing. And we would just look for those types of incentives to help keep them excited and motivated about learning.
And Dr. Mo, I mean, I, I understand that you don't create the policy for the UC. So, it's not, I'm not saying, it's not you're doing, quite frankly. It's, it's just a challenge getting a kid who's, uh, to wake up before noon and, uh, work to get a great grade. And if they realize, "Oh, it doesn't really matter" for the UCs and Cal States, then I guess if private schools are an option, good pa, private schools, it just, uh, um, it's interesting. Thanks, thank you for, it's the best-
Before we go on, before we go on to other public comments, this is, uh, Dr. Su speaking. Uh, I just want to just put out a friendly reminder. We are actually adopting a resolution tonight. It's regarding the emergency school dismissal and even perhaps even through the summer of this year due to the COVID nineteen. Just, it's so important that we remember that, uh, we are in clearly uncharted waters here. And we are creating systems in place during this pandemic. And I, I know that our team has done the very best, and I appreciate, um, you know, Board Member Sophia Faith's comments about how this is very similar to many other school districts because we rely on what is happening in other districts as well. But we are doing our very best at this time for creating these new systems in place to be able to address all these various issues every single day, every single day. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also want to go ahead and echo that because we have heard a lot of parent concerns. And what we do is, you know, like Dr. Mayfield mentioned, we ask them to follow the chain of command. The first point of contact should be the teacher. They start moving up with the principal, and then bring it to the attention of district perhaps. But we'd like to think that those kind of issues can absolutely be handled at the school level once parents make the appropriate people aware. Okay, thank you. We, we will move on to, um, Vice President Mendoza?
I'm good, Madam President. We can move on.
Um, well, I'll just, I don't want to skip anyone. Uh, Board Member La, did you want to have any comments? Okay, I'll take that as a no. Um, I think that was it. Yeah, I think most, you know, again, it's, it's an imperfect process, right? We can't, we, I, we recognize that, that the people that we're charged with this are absolutely doing the best that they can. And it's obvious that they took a lot of input, um, to make the best grade possible. So, thank you. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Apodaca?
Yes.
Mr. La? Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Ms., Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
The vote passes, the motion passes six to z, to zero.
Okay, do we have any, oh, nothing. Okay, next item, four-ten dash A. May I have a motion to approve bid award A to C fifteen fifty-seven for food safety training and cleaning supplies to food, food safety systems as lowest responsible bidders?
So, move to Sophia.
Do you have a second?
Second, Ernie.
Okay, Mr. Wen?
Thank you. Good evening. So, this is a required, um, service by the USDA and also CDE for our Food Nutrition Services Department. Each year, we are required to engage an independent consultant to come and not only train our employees, uh, on safe food handling, uh, proper temperature, proper hand washing, and the cleaning of the food preparation and serving materials, but also to provide training and give exam and certification to deserve safe process, um, or certification other that, that each employee in the Nutrition Services Department has to, to, to have, um, the serve certification before they be able to, to work in the department. So, uh, we have this vendor for the last three years, and the contract was, um, up, so we went out to bid. And, um, we happy to make the recommendation to the board for, uh, this vendor again. Um, the contract calls for sixty-three thousand nine hundred dollars per year to provide training to all of our employees, to provide inspections of all of our kitchens and at schools as well as the central kitchen. They also provide, um, all the chemicals that we need in terms of the, uh, cleaning, uh, the detergents, uh, for the cleaning and, and, and the sanitizer, sanitizer to clean the, um, all the equipment. So, this is an increase of about one point four percent from the current contract. Currently, we pay her about sixty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars in the current year. So, the next year is sixty-three thousand nine hundred dollars. Um, the contract is an annual contract, so, uh, with the option to extend it every year for the next four years. So, it's a annual contract for four years, for five years.
Any public comments?
There is none, Dr. President.
Any discussion?
Good job, woman. A great bid. Not only Josh, but Joshie. Good job.
Thank you.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Apodaca?
Yes.
Mr. La? Mrs. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Nishi?
Yes.
Dr. Rios?
Yes.
Mrs. Say?
Yes.
Mrs. Yu?
Yes.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Okay, here we go. Last item. Item twelve, one point, uh, information items, one point six dash one, bathroom facilities using measure BB funds. Mr. Wen?
Uh, thank you, Dr. Rios. I have Ryan Carter, uh, the Bond Program Manager, on the line to present it to the board, an update of where we are with the measure BB. And there was a question about, um, due to COVID nineteen, should we consider changing the priority and, um, and moving up the bathrooms, um, as a first priority under safety, um, at all schools? So, we have a presentation. The PowerPoint was sent to the board. Ryan will present to the board, uh, briefly the presentation. He'll go it slide by slide, and then, um, we have a plan, as we, uh, and we'll share it with you, on how to meet the safety of our students when it comes to hand washings, uh, should they come back in the fall. So, um, Ryan, uh, I'm going to turn it over to you.
I'm sorry, when was the, um, this PowerPoint sent?
This PowerPoint was sent on Thursday, um, with the superintendent briefing, and it is available on the website, the district website. So, if you may want to go there and, uh, and if you don't have access to it, you can go to the district website so you can follow it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Wen. Uh, good evening.
Well, thank you, Mr. Wen. Good evening, President Rios, distinguished board members, Dr. Sue, and district staff. Today, I will be going over the PowerPoint which Twan had mentioned. If we can, we can go ahead and start. We can go to the second slide here and we'll go over the agenda really briefly. So the purpose of this is to review the implementation plan, provide an update for the playgrounds, the water bottle filling stations, a security update. We can briefly discuss the high school modernizations, hand washing stations, as Twan had mentioned, and the reconsideration of program organization. If you would, please go to the third slide. The program implementation is shown here in this slide is the one that was selected by the Board of Education. As you recall, we had discussed during a special study session in 2019 several different scenarios as options for the implementation of Measure BB. And we ended up selecting Scenario 1C, starting with the high schools, focusing on the complete modernizations of those, of Artesia High School and Whitney High School first, and then moving on to the rest of the high schools while also simultaneously completing our quick start projects and our security projects as in the first bond sale. So we can go ahead and move on to the fourth slide here. As far as playground projects, I am very happy to announce we're still on schedule despite COVID-19 and some disruptions on our deliveries for the equipment itself to be completed by December of this year with all elementary schools and all playground installations. I have attached a few different photos of some of the recent installations. And we will be continuing based on the list that I had provided to the board previously in order to go through and complete the rest of the elementary schools by December. If we can go to Slide 5. We have also presented in the previous meetings that we will be installing water bottle filling stations at all schools. This will be completed by this August, August of 2020. And that will be in addition to some other items that we'll be presenting as far as hand washing later. If we can go to Slide 6 for security. So as we had brought to the board in a previous meeting, we had hired Will Highten Associates to conduct security assessments on all of our campuses and all of our ancillary facilities throughout the district. All those assessments are completed and the executive summaries have been turned over to District Cabinet for review. Security cameras have been completed, so those are installed now at every single campus we have. So that is a full camera system that also has monitoring. And we have also developed end to end with calling our, our security camera policy. Fire alarm standards have been developed as part of our security measures. Throughout the security site assessments completed by Will Highten Associates, there were a few things that were highlighted to be typical issues that stood out across the district. One of which was security cameras, which is already completed. Another is the fire alarm systems. They are in need of a retrofit in most of our campuses. And we would like to bring them up to the most current voice evacuation standards. And the, the third one would be district-wide PA and a mass certification system. So in the time of a district-wide emergency or if we need to enter into a lockdown situation, a mass certification or PA system, as commonly known, would be introduced into all campuses as a uniform platform that would allow us to do so and, and implement those lockdown procedures. And we would also be able to do this remotely from an EOC standard that the superintendent and cabinet would be able to monitor and, and in real time activate and, and use. So this would be an excellent addition to their tools. As well as a district-wide PA, we're looking at upgrading our phone systems. As you know, everybody's now working remotely. We have run into a few issues with our current telephone system being able to have the capacity for, for everyone working remotely. So we are working hand in hand with our IT department to develop a scope for replacement and upgrade for all of our telephone systems. And that would be bringing us up to all voiceover IP standards, which is most current throughout all districts. Lastly, for security, we're looking at access controls. Now, access controls mean several different things. One, we're looking into locks and keys, but we're also looking at actual physical access to campuses. And we're also looking into possible card reader type systems to allow us to, again, do a lockdown procedure remotely or, you know, have more control over our security of our campuses through an automated system. So if the keys were lost or misplaced or our staff were to come and go, we would be able to make those adjustments digitally versus having to rekey locks and possibly have lost keys out there. So that's all for security at the moment. If we can move on to Slide number 7. So the high school modernization status. So we're currently in planning and designing. We've completed schematic designs and we're in design development. So what that means is we have followed basically all of the, if we can actually skip ahead, it'll help a little bit. Let's skip to Slide number 9. And we followed the, the priority list adopted by the board in our study session. So when, when we went through and programmed out the scope of work for each one of these high school modernizations, we focused on this priority list and went through with that as, as our number one mindset and made sure that we were going through the list in numerical order. So first and foremost, you know, we looked at the security. We also looked at lunch shelters, but, you know, a large part of everything that we're doing in these modernizations are going to focus on the classrooms. So 4A, B, and C are the technology finishes and furniture. As we will discuss in a little bit, restrooms are obviously a very high priority to the board and the district. And those are going to be very high on the priority as well throughout the modernization process. Part of this scope will be presented to the board in, in a later future meeting where I can get into detail about what each one of the, the items means and what that actually will be at each one of the high school campuses. I don't want to take too much time into going into detail on that tonight. But we are on track and we are anticipated to submit these projects to the Division of State Architect for Approval by August of 2020, which will allow us to have these bids by January and February of 2021. And we will begin construction in June of 2021 on the two high school addition, or the high school modernization. Okay, so moving on from that, let's discuss the hand washing stations. So in response to one of the questions that I had received from Twan, who I believe got it from the board, on the best route for addressing hand washing stations and our restroom situation with, as it relates to fixture counts and things of that nature, we had put together a plan to mitigate those concerns. So that plan would be, staff has kind of come together and decided that in order to appropriately install and, and have an answer to the, the issue in a timely manner, we would need to request an emergency resolution from the Board of Education next month. And that resolution would enable us to expedite the installation of multiple hand washing stations throughout the district before the start of the 2020-2021 academic calendar year. What we're proposing is to install ADA-compliant stainless steel sinks with automated soap dispensers, hand-free faucets, which will allow students to access these areas and, and, you know, wash their hands and practice those types of things more frequently and more freely. The quantities we're looking at is two multi-station sinks at each elementary school. And by multi-station sinks, in the PowerPoint presentation, you'll see on the bottom right-hand corner, it shows a picture of a four-compartment sink there. So something similar to those is what we're proposing to install. And these would be exterior mounted, somewhat near restrooms that we currently have now. But they would be mounted on the outside of the restroom so students could easily access them to wash their hands. We're proposing, like I said, two multi-station sinks at the elementaries, three to four at the middles, four to five at the high schools. And that's just basically following the enrollment. And in addition to those, we're looking at, the district actually already has procured 222 wall-mounted hand sanitizing dispensing units. So those are automated, touch-free. Those are going to be distributed throughout the district to assist with this mitigation. In addition to those, we have procured 40 portable, 60-gallon two-stink hand washing stations, similar to the ones you may see at a fair. We provided a photograph of those as well in the top right corner of this slide. So those would also be implemented throughout the district. So again, to kind of recap, our, our plan is, is to get out in front of this before the students return to school next year and provide these options to increase our ability to sanitize. So the last slide here on number 11. The program implementation question for reprioritization. One of the things that I'm looking at is, that I've done actually, is regurgitated this slide from one of our study sessions that we had when we were contemplating how we would implement the bond program originally. So I just want to recap some of the, the items that, that may come up should we choose to refocus on multiple sites doing individual smaller scale projects like renovating all restrooms at a campus versus looking at the holistic approach of taking care of all of the scope and modernization at one time, moving on to the next school site. So quickly, I'll go through the bullets just for reference. We would be looking at lots of time due to the reorganization of the program. Obviously, we've spent a lot of time on the implementation plan that we have so far. So we're working towards, you know, completing that goal because we, we wouldn't want to lose any of the efforts and, and things that we've done to date. We would possibly have negative impact to the sites because we'd have multiple projects at the sites. It's obviously less efficient, efficiently economically. As I stated, we're breaking down the projects to individual smaller projects, so less economy of scale. You get higher soft costs because the, the projects are on a percentage base, leaving less dollars for construction. And we may be looking at possible code changes over the life of the bond that could require, or DSA, excuse me, that DSA may require us to, to modify in the future or replace due to code changes. So that would be my list of negative impact and impacts to possibly changing the implementation plan. With that, I'll wrap it up and leave it open for questions.
Thank you. I'd like to remind the board that this is an informational item and that we are down 10:49. So let's keep our comments brief. Okay, go ahead. Chris?
Thank you, Madam President. So, and this is, I'm glad that this is coming up especially right now. A lot of folks don't know what's going on with Measure BB. However, you did mention Mr. Carter, going back to originally when we passed the bond, when we passed the resolution. When we passed the resolution, we also made it a point to exclude non-PLA, non-local workforce agreement language. And so what I'd like to see is if this comes back or when this comes back for an action item to include the efforts we've made to collect bids, not just from vendors that we know, national vendors, large vendors, but local vendors, local labor vendors, and growing out the relationship that we have with our local small businesses to bid on this work. That's all, Madam President. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Madam President, may I add a couple of comments? Couple things?
Yes.
So thank you for bringing this item up because before we close, I remember there was several parents that were upset that we hadn't done anything about the bathrooms. They said that we're in violation and several other issues that were out there regarding the bathrooms. And, and then we have this crisis and everything changed. Everything changed. Schools are closed, money is short, lots of things have changed.
Nine minutes.
And I'm thinking that unfortunately, if we fix the toilet, I mean, if we fix the furniture and the furnishings and things like that before we do the toilet, people are going to think we're crazy. I think it's, it's great that we're having all these hand washing stations, which is great. But I remember that Principal of Artesia telling me that these restrooms need to be fixed. And Cerritos, I remember having an, an event there and the people couldn't find the bathroom. It was far, far away from where they were at. And Lille, it's legendary how, how bad those bathrooms are. What I'm saying is that we need to, due to the crisis, we can't just act as if it's business as usual. The same things that were a priority then are not a priority now. It's, things have changed. And I think that we have to consider health and safety of our kids before we consider the furniture. And I, by the way, I'm the first one to want lunch shelters. I'm the first one to want technology. I'm the first one who wants security.
Security.
And security, that was the reason we got this bond approved. I think that a lot of the voters would also say that it's also important that our kids have sanitary facilities. Having hand washing stations is great. I don't know if it gets around DSA to have the stainless steel things, but I'm sure there's a way to, to do that. And I know that the soft costs are always going to be there. It's, sometimes you have to adjust to the situation. I know that you guys will do the best you can in situations that you have. So I still think we need to prioritize bathrooms over this summer so that way we can get these things done. And we have to do it anyway. It's part of what, might as well just change the order. And I know that it takes some permitting process, but we can try to get that expedited as a health and safety issue. And it would be terrible if they rejected us.
I too, I too support Board Member Ernie's statement. It's true though. We're talking about health safety. It's under safety anyway. You know, due to the, this epidemic things, I think you should consider that as first priority right away for a student when they come back to the face-to-face class setting time.
Thank you for, Board Member Say. And yes, I'd like to echo that. I think that, that is a priority of, of our board and as I mentioned, it was mentioned of the district. And things have changed and so our priorities have to change. And I also want to note that Board Member Nishi and I have reached out to our local elected officials and are seeking their assistance. You know, times are different and we know that DSA may become an issue. And so we're looking at them helping us out with that. Should, you know, maybe they can ease some of the restrictions. I know I reached out to CSDA and also let them know that that is a concern and see if there's anything that they can do in their own and to help us out. So again, it's an informational item. I encourage all of you to reach out to Ryan or to anybody at the district with your concerns and suggestions about moving forward. We're down to six minutes. So anybody else?
No, President.
Okay, good. If we're not voting on this, so Board Members report. I'll quickly go down the list. Vice President Mendoza?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd be really quick. Happy Cinco de Mayo. Even though we're not at the boardroom, I'm still wearing my Cinco de Mayo dress. Today, this month, we're celebrating lots of things. We're doing Teacher Day, Staff Day, Employee of the, of our staff, Mother's Day, Memorial Day. And I want to congratulate Principal, like our high school doctor, it's Doctor Ricardo. Right now because he got his doctoral degree. And the last one is, next board meeting, we're going to have to say Dr. Chris Apodaca. He will be officially graduated from USC. So congratulations to my colleague. I'm really proud of you. But I don't know if I can continue to call you. That, I might just have to call you Chris. But just one last, one last thing I want to bring up is that all of this information that's coming to our community, I think it's really important that we are able to share this in an accessible way to our parents and community because I know I've gotten, just like you guys, I've gotten a lot of text messages and emails about where to find this information. And I think as a district, we kind of need to work on putting our message out there, information right now during COVID-19. So if we could work on that and I will see you all or I will hear you all at our next board meeting.
Thank you. I liked that one-minute presentation. Board members, you?
Me? Cola, you?
Anyone else?
Sophie, sir. I want to say happy mothers, happy mothers and nurse of the week. We won't see before that. Second thing, me and the President Ogai and Ernie, we had a Zoom one time with our parents and we heard from some concern and parents and the teacher. It was a great meeting that we had together. It was a great, uh, meeting that we had together, and, uh, I think parents do need, uh, hear from us and follow the chain command. I think it is important. Thank you, Board President, that you mentioned it two times. I really like that. And also to the public, please, if you have any issue, please contact your teacher first. If the issue cannot resolve, go to principal, just follow the chain command. Thank you, Board President.
Thank you. Board Member Apodaca?
No, nothing, Madam President.
Board Member Law?
Okay, for-
Okay, yeah, back to Board, you?
Clark, you? Okay. I brought a lot of questions and challenges tonight. That does not, uh, mean that I'm belittling our district during the COVID-19. We need to work together to resolve together. It is easy for me to rave and praise our staff and Dr. Sue. Uh, it's a generalized praise is empty. Automated praise appreciation is sincere. Today I heard a comment from a young woman. She said ABC is a good place to work for. Why? Because of all the hard work Dr. Sue and her cabinet, principals, and teachers, and most importantly, our teacher union, Ray Gear, the collaboration. I have no doubt that just as during the recession, we will, together, we will make it work. The board passed the resolution giving Dr. Sue, our superintendent, authority to make decisions on necessary actions to respond to COVID-19, 'cause we cannot meet. And to the public, please do not ask board, board members regarding the changes and the questions, because we do not have all the answers. We may not be updated, but we welcome your feedbacks and concerns, so we, we can bring them to the cabinet. That is all for tonight. Happy Cinco de Mayo, everyone.
Thank you, Sue. Thank you.
Hello?
Yes.
Did everybody get kicked out?
No.
I don't know.
Okay, now we're getting out. So I had to get, I, I had to log back in. Okay, so we're still moving down the list. Board Member Nishi?
Really quick, um, I wanna say thank to Dr. Sue for getting one thousand one hundred units out there to hotspots, um, internet access and everything, and that's really awesome, 'cause I saw it and compared it to the other districts. We're actually doing pretty good.
I know.
Uh, you may hear me complain, but seriously, we're doing actually very good. Uh, just some things that we can do, obviously better. Somebody would like to find out how we're gonna be opening up, what it actually looks like in the classroom. Um, and I'm sure that's gonna come in due time. And, um, you know, some of the people have been kind of, uh, saying that, uh, we ought to be doing Google meets, just like we have the students doing Google meets, so that way they can actually see us and, and potentially comment live time. A lot of people, um, had just texted me and said, "Hey, I can't say anything. What's the point of you guys having a meeting?" I'm like, "Well, um, you had plenty of opportunity earlier." But in that, uh, maybe we could, uh, follow the example of our students and go do a Google meets one of these days for a following meeting, and happy Mother's Day, all you moms out there.
Thank you.
Floor shops are open Friday.
Thank you, Ernie. Plans for better.
Okay, well, I think that almost does it. We have one minute. I'm gonna do my statement really quickly. We're dealing with unprecedented circumstances. I want to again thank our board, our superintendent, Dr. Sue, by the way, happy birthday, wishing you a belated birthday. I understand it was your birthday last week. I want to thank all of our staff, and I also want to take a minute to recognize Scott Smith for providing our community with such regular updates and keeping us connected with our community via social media. So thank you, Scott. Um, this week we celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week. A very special thank you to all the dedicated teachers across the district. We know that nothing matters more in the classroom to affect student learning than an effective teacher. So hang in there, we appreciate you. And of course, a special acknowledgement to our very own teachers on the board. So, um, happy Teacher Day or Week to Board, um, Vice President Mendoza, and to Sophia, who has a double celebration, because it's Nurses' Day tomorrow. So yes, congratulations. Um, okay, and that is it.
Okay.
Moving to adjournments. May I have a motion to adjourn in the memory of Sky Thompson, adult transition program student?
Apodaca, so moved.
What? Sue? Second.
And I'd also wanna acknowledge-
Yeah.
What's that?
Go ahead.
I also had one acknowledge, uh, Mr. Mayor Law, who was also a special education teacher for many years.
That's right, yes.
Absoluted, yes. Okay, and yours truly, teacher for twenty years. Okay.
A nice board meeting?
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Where's that nice board meeting? So moved, Sue.
I need to-
Second.
Need to read the memoriam.
Sorry, I missed all that. What happened?
I, I'm sorry, our trip, I think, I, I believe Board Member Apodaca is going to read the memoriam for Sky.
Yes.
And this comes from her mother, Sheila. "Sky was the most loving and lovable soul, full of sweetness and kindness. She was beautiful inside and out, and saw the beauty in everyone and everything. Though she passed away earlier than expected, she lived her eighteen years of life to the fullest. Despite being born with challenges, Sky excelled as a student of ABC Unified School District from kindergarten through twelfth grade. Throughout her time with ABC Unified, Sky formed lasting bonds with faculty, staff, and her schoolmates. As a student of Cerritos High School, Sky cheered on the cheer team, worked as a lunchtime cafeteria worker, and during her senior year, she worked in the school office as a TA, where she was well-liked by staff. Her favorite teacher throughout her time with the district was Nikki Tiazza, whom she loved and adored. Miss C, as Sky called her, made a lasting impression, and the two remained connected from their introduction through Sky's sixth grade year, up until Sky's passing. Most recently, Sky had been attending ABC Adult Transition School at Cabrio Lane. Sky will be greatly missed by her mother, family, and friends in the district, and Sky passed on April first of two thousand twenty."
Thank you. And with that, we adjourn. Uh, our next board meeting, oh my goodness, they just cut me out. Uh, our next one, the board meeting will be Tuesday, June second, two thousand twenty, seven PM. Finance and Audit Board Committee meeting will be May twenty-first, six PM. Okay, meeting is adjourned. All in favor?
So moved.
Aye. I'm waiting to hear the dabble.
Oh, we gotta hear the dabble. I have-
So moved a second, then, oh, aye.
Have a great rest of the week, everyone.
Thank you, President.
Good night, everybody. Good night.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.